Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Your meeting of this Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order at 6:05 PM. We give the floor now to the Honorable Councilman William Parker Jr. to introduce this evening's invocation.
Good afternoon, Pontiac residents. I would like to introduce to you Pastor Debbie Burgess from Cavalry Missionary Baptist Church. She will be giving our invocation this evening. Please welcome her as she comes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Father God, in the name of Jesus, Lord, we just thank you that we can come unto you tonight, Lord, thanking you for the privilege and the honor it is to serve this great community. Lord, we thank you for the city of Pontiac. Lord, we thank you for the residents. God, we thank you for those who've been placed in authority, God, that they may make decisions, Father God, that would be a blessing to this community. Lord, your word says if any man lack of wisdom, let him ask of you, and God, you would give it liberally. And Father, tonight, on behalf of these great men and women, Lord, I come before you, Lord, and I ask that you would impart your godly wisdom into them. Lord, give them strategies and plans that far exceed their education, their experience, Lord, their talents, and their abilities. Father, we believe that this city is going to rise again with greatness. And, Lord, we know this because, God, you watch over your word to perform it. Lord, you have promised, Father God, that you would fall upon this community with the freshness of your Spirit. Lord, you said that you would bring peace to our land. God, you said somehow, Lord, you were going to cause good to come out of all of the chaos. And, Lord, I stand upon the authority of your word that you are not a God that you should lie. As a matter of fact, Father, you said you watch over your word to perform it. You said that you are the same yesterday, today, and forevermore. Therefore, God, I believe that your word is true. Therefore, God, I believe that you are raising up men and women, Lord, who you will impart wisdom and knowledge and ability and strategies and ideas, Lord, to bring this community back to the forefront. So, once again, Lord, she will be noted for greatness. And so, Father, I thank you, Lord, that your peace shall rule and reign in this community. I thank you, Father God, that the entrepreneurial spirit will rise up in this community. I thank you, Father God, where there is lack, Lord, there is going to be plenty. Where there is hopelessness, there will be hope. God, where there's injustice, there will be justice. Father, I thank you, Lord, that you are good. I thank you, Father God, that we can call upon your name and you hear us. So, tonight, Father God, I just thank you, Lord, with an expectant heart, that there are yet great things, great things, God, that shall come to this community. I thank you, Lord, that every child shall be educated, every child shall go to college. I thank you, Lord, that every child will have a mom and dad present in the home. I thank you, Lord, that every child that has been wounded or traumatized shall be healed and shall have a second chance of hope, because, God, you are going to rule and reign in our hearts and in our minds. And so, Father, I just thank you, Lord, that you are going to honor our prayers. I thank you, Father God, that these great men and women who sit in these big chairs, God, will be given the strategies of God. And, Lord, we bless them tonight, and we thank you, Lord. I ask you, God, to redeem their time, because, Lord, I know that they spend more time than anybody ever knows, God, because they love this city. And so, Father, I ask you to bless them, Lord, to bless their endeavors. And I thank you, Father God, with we have together expectant hearts, yes, Lord, I'm going to say it again, that great things are going to come out of this community. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right, Debbie Burgess, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. We remember those in our community that we have lost since we gathered last, both in your neighborhoods, in your congregations, in your families, and those beyond the physical boundaries of our city, those in your lives that have passed as well. Please join us for a moment of silence as a community. Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call, Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Here.
James.
Here.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum.
Quorum being established. All members are present and voting. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford. Any discussion on the motion before us this evening, which is the agenda? Hearing no further discussion. We have the agenda prepared for us this evening. Copies are available for the community with us presently in person. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call and adoption of the agenda.
I'd like to make an amendment.
All right, there's a motion to amend. Councilman Goodman.
I'd like to add a resolution calling for the investigation of Nevada Street Incident involving the Sheriff's Department.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilman Nicholson to add a resolution. It would be the new number four. So, a city council resolution calling for investigation of Nevada Street Incident involving the Sheriff's Department. It's been moved and seconded. All other items, if adopted, would just essentially continue down correspondingly. Any discussion on the motion to amend? What we'd be doing is just adding this item for consideration by the city council. Hearing no discussion on the amendment. Roll call on adoption of the amendment, adding that resolution to this evening's business before us as a community. Clerk Doyle.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. So, the agenda has been amended to add that as well. Is there any other discussion or amendments tonight? Hearing no further discussion or amendments. What we have on this evening's agenda is what's provided before you, as well as the addition of Oakland County Sheriff's Department Leadership Special Presentation and that council resolution calling for the investigation with the Nevada Street Incident. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call and adoption of the agenda as amended. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. So, the agenda has been amended to add that as well. Is there any other discussion or amendments tonight? Hearing no further discussion or amendments. What we have on this evening's agenda is what's provided before you, as well as the addition of Oakland County Sheriff's Department Leadership Special Presentation and that council resolution calling for the investigation with the Nevada Street Incident. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call and adoption of the agenda as amended. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. So, the agenda has been amended to add that as well. Is there any other discussion or amendments tonight? Hearing no further discussion or amendments. What we have on this evening's agenda is what's provided before you, as well as the addition of Oakland County Sheriff's Department Leadership Special Presentation and that council resolution calling for the investigation with the Nevada Street Incident. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call and adoption of the agenda as amended. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. So, the agenda has been amended to add that as well. Is there any other discussion or amendments tonight? Hearing no further discussion or amendments. What we have on this evening's agenda is what's provided before you, as well as the addition of Oakland County Sheriff's Department Leadership Special Presentation and that council resolution calling for the investigation with the Nevada Street Incident. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call and adoption of the agenda as amended. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. So, the agenda has been amended to add that as well. Is there any other discussion or amendments tonight? Hearing no further discussion or amendments. What we have on this evening's agenda is what's provided before you, as well as the addition of Oakland County Sheriff's Department Leadership Special Presentation and that council resolution calling for the investigation with the Nevada Street Incident. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call and adoption of the agenda as amended. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. So, the agenda has been amended to add that as well. Is there any other discussion or amendments tonight? Hearing no further discussion or amendments. What we have on this evening's agenda is what's provided before you, as well as the addition of Oakland County Sheriff's Department Leadership Special Presentation and that council resolution calling for the investigation with the Nevada Street Incident. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call and adoption of the agenda as amended. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. So, the agenda has been amended to add that as well. Is there any other discussion or amendments tonight? Hearing no further discussion or amendments. What we have on this evening's agenda is what's provided before you, as well as the addition of Oakland County Sheriff's Department Leadership Special Presentation and that council resolution calling for the investigation with the Nevada Street Incident. Hearing no further discussion. Roll call and adoption of the agenda as amended. Clerk Doyle.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We'll proceed with this evening's business. Is there a motion to approve and adopt the consent agenda?
So moved. Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman. It has the meeting minutes of our regular meeting on August 16th and our special meeting on August 20th. So, it's just carrying out the adoption of those meeting minutes. Roll call on approval and adoption of the consent agenda. Clerk Doyle.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
That motion carries. We are now at this evening's first special presentation, the leadership from the Oakland County Sheriff's Department to share about their use of force protocols and field questions from the city council. We give the floor to Captain Andre Ewing. Welcome, Captain Ewing.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the council president, pro temp, and the city council members for allowing us to come here and speak to you today. I'm the commander and director of the station. I have several people here with me today. I have Captain Hill, Lieutenant Paul Workman. They oversee our use of force program, all our training and our crisis intervention. Also have former deputy commander.
Point of personal privilege.
Bobby Ford, who also used to be.
Point of personal privilege, yes, Councilman Goodman.
Captain Ewing, would you mind holding the microphone, just so that way everyone can hear you?
I also have, that works a lot better, Robert Ford, our former deputy commander with me today. So, and he used to be part of our training program. I'm gonna give you a brief summary of what happened last Thursday. Whenever we involve in a confrontation, it never looked good for law enforcement or either you out fighting the streets, especially when only the middle part of the confrontation is captured on video. The deputies responded to a welfare check. A lady in the street pulling down her pants, exposing herself to kids. When the deputies arrived on scene in the area of Montana and Franklin, they didn't rush to save her. They approached her carefully, and she walked away. They told her they had a co-responder, which is a social worker with them. She refused to talk to the social worker. As she was walking away and being defiant to the deputies, she pulled down her pants again. So, deputies at that time made the decision, since it was kids in the area, to take her into custody. Our intent was not to take her to jail, to take her to common ground and get her some treatment. But, since she resisted and a confrontation ensued, later she was taken to the jail for assault on a police officer. You know, I heard about this incident from my sister. She called me Friday morning, 7:30 in the morning. She said, "I know you're gonna fire them deputies." I was like, "Fire who? I haven't seen the incident yet, right?" So, I was like, "I don't have the power to fire or hire or suspend." So, I rushed to work earlier than I ever got here before and looked at this video. And I was upset. And I was like, "Oh, my goodness," right? But, in my job, I have to look at all the sides. What happened? What led up to it? What did deputies done? Were they outside of our policies and procedures? So, I have to look at all that before I make a decision. Like I was telling the mayor, we have four, five confrontations a week. Four, five a week. We can't just suspend them. We don't have nobody to work. But I'm gonna yield the floor, because I don't take up all your time, and give these men here a chance to answer your questions regarding our use of force, crisis intervention, or any other questions you might have. So, you guys can start with your questions.
Councilwoman Rutherford, you have the floor.
Good evening. Could you step to the mic, please, sir, whoever's gonna be answering these questions?
Depends on the question.
Yeah, I think it depends on the question.
Oh, it's gonna be you. The first question is, who deems when force is excessive?
I think we'll pass the mic around just in case. Sorry, I got Kelly with me, too. Good evening. So, all use of force that we have at the sheriff's office is reviewed. Every case is reviewed. And depending on what the review yields is depending on whether or not there's remedial training for the individual officer, whether or not there is a notation that we need to look at remedial training for the entire agency, whether or not that it's within policy, whether or not it is within the law and the case law. And that information is forwarded to our senior command when we see violations of policy, when we see violations of the law, and so forth.
Okay. My second question is, is there any, anyone, I understand that you guys have conducted an investigation, correct, about how the blows were hit on the side where the woman was hit at? My question is, is there an independent investigation going outside of what you're doing so that we can get a different viewpoint? Because sometimes it appears as though people in the community feel is that the investigation is from the side slided with the police. My issue is, is there an outside entity that has the opportunity to look at it from their perspective so that we can understand how you guys do assess the force? How do y'all deem that blows are acceptable? And most importantly, what is or is not to the extreme? So, my question is, do you have an outside entity investigating this particular incident?
We do not at this time. And I say that because we are in the preliminary review stage where it's looked at, where it's reviewed, then we can articulate and start documenting frame by frame, look by look, because it's very important to look at the whole picture, not just the video that has been seen. I reviewed both of those. One thing that's really important to note is that as the officers are pulling up, you can see on the video where the female subject is attempting to light what appears to be a rag. She's standing over a pile of brush and like right next to a tree. So, it's unknown whether or not there's any type of flambles on the rag, on her, on the tree, but you can see the spark of the lighter several times. That itself is a felony. It's prepped to burn. So, that right there gives authority to arrest. And again, knowing different things that can be understood and knowing all the facts, it's really important to look at everything from the very, very start to the very, very end. So, that investigation is being conducted. I assume with your present, or your motion for an independent or for an investigation, that there will be some type of request to the sheriff's office and for a presentation on the findings of that.
All right, thank you.
It's been commonly referenced that this incident ultimately took place on Nevada. Would it be more appropriate to say that essentially the physical struggle between multiple deputies and the Pontiac resident, that that was actually occurring on Montana, on Franklin, on Nevada? What's the most geographically appropriate?
The report by the officer said it occurred on Montana, but it could have been like in that area, because they got called to Montana and Franklin area. So, when they wrote the report, they mentioned the area they got called, but it could have occurred on Nevada.
Okay. President Pro Temp Carrington, and then Councilman Parker.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Concerning this incident, I know after I saw the video the next day, it was inboxed to me. And my official, my immediate response was, "Wow, how could that happen?" So, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, what I wanna say, I want a backseat drive. But at the same time, you guys had a social worker that was there at this incident.
Yes, ma'am. Or, yes, sir.
I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
And you said that she actually had a chance to meet with the particular citizen, but I'm kind of understanding why she, it was more time given to that particular situation.
Why wasn't there more time?
Yes. Allowing the social worker to take more time with that particular citizen. And the reason I ask that, because on car street, we have a same kind of incidents happen throughout every summer concerning another person that has mental health issues. And the citizen around that particular household have been able to come out, talk to the police officers, and kind of de-escalate that situation. Myself, I have definitely talked to Oakland County Sheriff's, like, "Look, he's mentally, he has a mental health issue. Please take this situation a lot slower so it won't trigger into something that's a lot bigger than what it is." So, I'm just wondering, could the social worker have a little more time to really dig into this situation?
I'm glad you asked that, sir. Before I let Lieutenant Workman speak, I know he's got several, probably several opinions on, or several items to address as well. One of the things that is the foundation and core of our CIT, which is our Crisis Intervention Team, a lot of times that's confused with Crisis Intervention Training, which is not necessarily, sorry about that, I know ma'am here doesn't like the dog, and she evidently likes, so I will make sure we stay back here. The CIT is really Crisis Intervention Team. It's a 40-hour class in which the officers go to, in which they learn a number of different things. They learn all the different types of mental illness. It's almost like a crash course of mental illness. And then what they learn is they learn basic and advanced de-escalation skills. The foundation of that course, if you will, is to impose on the officers that when there's time, use it, and when there's not time, then don't. In this particular case, without getting into all the details, as I remember in the video, and to answer the other question, too, the struggle actually makes it almost all the way up to the intersection of a sidewalk. which is Montana and Nevada. So, and I'm not sure which one it's on. We'd have to look back. But to go back to your question, sir, when there is time, use it, and when there's not, don't. And, and we can look at all kinds of different incidents that happen throughout the country, even here at home. Oftentimes, we see videos of officers who don't use time. In this particular case, with the threat of lighting something on fire, that rag, and then she starts walking away from, from the police, or from the sheriff's deputies. She's walking directly in a, in a very quick manner into the roadway, or at least on the sidewalk, would appears to be away from the officers. I believe the fear of those officers was that she was going to go into the roadway and, and be harmed or injured. So I, again, I, I think that whereas we can look at a number of different incidences where we didn't use time, honestly, there, there wasn't a whole lot of time to be used, because I would completely agree with you, sir. And that's my foundation and, and the part of the senior leadership of the sheriff's office is, I don't care how long you spend on a call, as long as you're providing good service to the customers, the community, and giving them their community needs. And I think that's extremely important. Is that Workman?
All right, thank you, sir. Go for the questions, though.
Councilman Parker, Councilman Nicholson, Councilman Rutherford.
Thank you, sir. You, you mentioned that the Crisis Intervention Team works on, in a time window. Who determines the time window?
We give them to the time moment, the window.
The social services person that's there, the mental health person that's there, or the officers themselves?
So our co-responder unit actually was approved late last year, but we had a difficult time finding co-responder. We, we subcontract, the county does, with OCHN, Oakland Community Health Network. So the social worker that was on site rides with, and is assigned to the city of Pontiac, and rides with CIT-trained officers. And the first few hours of her shift, she follows up with stuff that, that happens off shift. And then the next few hours, I don't want to say when she's bored, but when she doesn't, she's not following up or doing some proactive stuff, she rides with officers and they jump mental health calls. And that's exactly why she was there. Given the ability to, I don't think she even had time to even intervene. I think they were just explaining to her that, that she was on scene when she started to walk away in, in a quick manner. What was your second part of your question, sir? I don't think I-
My first question was, who determines the time?
So, so the officers do. And, and when I say the officers do, we empower them to utilize time when time is on their side. And they have to depend on and refer back to their training, their experience, the laws, the case law, and, and our policy. Traditionally, if you were to ask a high-volumed police department how long they spent on a call, they're going to tell you minutes. Why? Because they want to hurry up, solve the problem, go on their way, and go to the next call to, to reduce the call volume wait time. And although I, I want to reduce call volume wait time, I think it's extremely important, especially when dealing with people suffering from mental illness, that we give the time that's needed to help re, give resources. The initial, although that was a felony, I, I don't believe that the intent of those officers was to arrest her. The Michigan Health Code gives officers the authority to take protective custody. Because there was, although there was a crime committed, because there was no victim, because there was nothing burned, that gives them the ability to do what's called as a jail diversion. So although they could charge with a felony, they don't. So they note that in a report and then take to common ground. Since we've started CIT training in 2015, our use of common ground has gone up exponentially, to the point where when the board of commissioners now say, hey, how much money do you need to do training? My, my redirection is, well, we need a little bit of money to do training, but what I really need is I need more common grounds. I need common grounds throughout the entire county. Common ground is nice because it's here in Pontiac. So for Pontiac residents and for, for the community of Pontiac, that's great. But for our other areas within the county, it's not so great, because there's other agencies that, that don't get to utilize common ground. And when I say that, when you spend more time with the, the actual customer on, on the street, or the client on the street who needs community health assistance, when you give them more time, that prevents unnecessary runs, that gives them the services they provide, that's going to reduce their injury, that's going to reduce officer injury, it's going to reduce reuse of force and so forth. So we're a huge proponent of Crisis Intervention, Crisis Intervention Team training. And, and again, not everything can be solved that way. We had what, what I would call the perfect storm of two CIT officer, trained officers that are on scene with a co-responder, and they still couldn't solve that problem in a reduced or, or non-confrontational manner. The, to be quite frank, the officers were bit multiple times. Those strikes did not occur until those, those officers were bit. And when I say bit, I'm not talking about like a little nip from, from my pup. I'm, I'm talking about, which she doesn't, by the way. Don't worry. She licks a lot, but, but I don't, I don't say that without reservation, because I think the, there was a number of people that were on scene that made comments on the video that she wasn't hurting anybody, she wasn't doing anything. I truly believe that they, they believe that. What they didn't see was that she was physically biting them on the arms, on the legs, on the inside of the thighs. There's photos. She even tore through a pair of pants, which I don't know if anybody's worn a poor pair of our Class A pants. But they're poly wool and they're extremely hot and thick. And to bite through a pair of those, that's a, a lot of pressure.
Okay. My next question is, as you mentioned your training, I know you talk about the CIT training. Does that include in the 40 hours that you do, does that include acute, acute mental health crisis training?
It, it does, sir. That really is-
How long is that?
We could really sum, well, they redid the, the course curriculum. It was about 32 hours of, of different types of acute crisis training, meaning that you spend about one hour on, on schizophrenia, one hour on excited delirium, one hour on Alzheimer's and, and elderly care. Now, the, where the curriculum is ran, now it's all embedded where you don't have specific scenarios. They save that for the advanced training now. We have a one-day advanced training where they spend four hours doing nothing but scenarios. And I will add that the Oakland County Sheriff's Office is a little bit different. Since 2015, we, the trainers, kind of realized how important this intervention training was, to the point where we kind of, I don't want to say sprinkle it, but we sprinkle it in all of our in-service training that we do.
So as you're going to these incidences, is there a way to find out whoever is there, or when you get on site, whether that person has tried out prior mental health issues?
If we get that knowledge that's available, what we tell people, tell our officers and train them is, I don't want you to assume that everybody has a mental illness, but NAMI, the National Alliance for Mental Health, says that one in four or one in five Americans suffer from some type of mental illness. So people don't call us because they're just happy to see us and want to invite us over for a barbecue. Although that wouldn't be bad, but they just don't. So when you start combining different things, we, we tell the officers that it's probably safe to assume that sometimes things can not be what they appear to be. So really start looking for different types of cues, and this is where that 40-hour advanced training comes in. All of our officers have gone through several, either two, four, or eight-hour blocks of mental health training as it is, and we do that on a regular basis to look for those signs. So all deputies are trained. And what I look, what we have is our CIT, our Crisis Intervention Team-trained officers that are deployed throughout the county. We have 70, 72 that are on the road right now that are trained, which puts us over that 20%. The International Association Chiefs of Police recommend that you be at a 20% level. To be quite frank, we're at that, but I like, I like 100%. Now, I'm not sure we'll ever get to 100% through attrition and everything else, but I look at the CIT team as more of a specialized. We want the people to go to that training that want to be there. It's kind of like an evidence tech. You don't, you don't want to call an evidence tech to your house and have them throw some dust everywhere if they don't care about getting fingerprints.
When deputies respond to these scenes, sometimes they know the person have a mental issue, because usually the persons who call in tell us, but if a person is out on the street and some people just calling, there's no way we know that they have a mental issue, because we don't have the person's name. And it takes time for the dispatcher to run the name through and see if they have any prior contacts, what we're going in for. So we do depend a lot on the citizens and on the people who's calling the incident. Like in your, in your situation, you knew, so your neighbors took an active involvement, came out and told the deputies and gave some assistance, so the deputies was patient and willing to work with all of you. It would have happened at this scene too. If somebody would have came out and said, hey, hey, let us deal with it, we used to, or whatever. Our deputies, they not that aggressive. They would have backed back and watching, like let the people also join in on restraining or whatever it had to be. But like, sometimes we know, but most of the time we don't.
So did you find out after the fact that this person may have been, had some mental health issues?
Microphone, please, just for those at home.
The deputies maybe knew that night, because it's not common for somebody to be pulling their pants down. So I'm sure they're trying to figure it out. And I met with the family that morning. I, I told her, I told the family I do all I can do to get her some help. But you know, the way the system works, she had to be arraigned and we, we do have mental health workers in our jail system that going to work with her. But once you get arraigned and go to court, so then they can, the judge and her, her attorney or whatever can work out something, maybe can get her additional help.
So the assumption is then that she's in jail, but she's receiving mental health-
Yes.
Evaluations and assistance?
And yes, sir, I know Paul's got something to say here. Just to readdress that too. We talk about jail diversion. A lot of times people think that means just don't go to jail. There's a, there's a lot of times where we have to take a person to jail, or we still have to follow up with prosecution. Jail diversion can mean several different things. Number one, it could mean like you have a crime, have a crime, but there's no victim, right? So we can jail divert because there is no victim and the crime wouldn't go forward. The second way is we could write a ticket. In this case, in, in instance, we can do jail diversion on the backside exactly the way the captain was talking about here, which is we have a jail diversion coordinator inside, and they work with the courts, and they work with different things. The, the goal, again, with CIT, is to provide the citizens with the help that they need. It, it's, it's not to do anything other than that. We're community caretakers and we understand that. One thing that, that, to begin off, that, that the captain talked about was, the first time I watch any video where someone say, hey, you got to go watch this, listen, it, it sickens me. When I look at it at the beginning, I'm like, ugh. Then I got to remember I have to apply some certain things. Number one, I have to start at the very, very beginning. Number two, it's emotional, okay? And, and nothing's, physical force is not pretty. It just isn't. E, even boxing, UFC fighting, it just is not pretty. And some people enjoy a little thing. What I'm saying is that I have to be very, very objective into what I look at. And a lot of times, unfortunately, with video, we start judging officers' actions by video and not by what they were actually seeing or what they actually heard. Meaning that you have officers that, you start looking at specific video and say, well, why didn't they see that? I could see that. Well, the video saw it. It doesn't mean they did. And when you contribute that with, with your, you know, your six-year-old kid at home that doesn't pick up their socks, right? And they say, well, I didn't see it. You're like, you stepped on it. How do you not see it? Well, it's, maybe they didn't, or maybe they did, right? So my, my point is this, that, that it's very, very, to be premature and to demand at certain things, what I would ask is that you, you let the, the process of the investigation work itself through, because no one more than the three of us and, and the leadership at the sheriff's office will tolerate or want anyone who violates even policy mustless the law or anyone's rights.
We do need to proceed with the speaker's list. Did Lieutenant Workman want to offer a quick answer?
Just real quickly, and now I'll probably lose my train of thought. In that case, in this case, you were asking about if the deputies receive information about mental health before they get to the call. In this case, the priming that the deputies received through dispatch, which was preparing them for the call, that's what priming is, was that she was actually probably drunk or on drugs. That's what dispatch relayed to them. So when they got out, that's what they're expecting to deal with, and they actually took a step back and noticed that maybe that it was a mental health-related incident. And they actually offered the social worker or the, the subject two times to speak to the social worker and tried to get her involved. And unfortunately, there was no personal contact made with that subject, and you have to have that in order to have de-escalation. And then secondly, I would just caution us too, when we're talking about mental health, and this is what I would stress to the deputies in training and simulation, just because there's a, somebody has mental, there are a lot of people with mental health that are functioning every day in our society very well, are using resources, are prescribed medication. And I don't want us to use mental health in a derogatory way and say that, hey, because somebody has mental health, we should treat them differently, because that's not the case. I think each incident should be judged on the incident itself from start to, start to end, not from end, knowing what the result was, and then going back and trying to fit what happened to that event. So that's what I would caution us on doing.
Okay. A last question.
You've, you've had many. I'll come back to you. Continuing the speaker's list, Councilman Nicholson.
Are you, are you sure I was next on the list?
Nicholson, Rutherford, and now Parker.
I, I, did we miss James?
I didn't see her hand.
Oh, okay. I thought she was called on the list. I, I just want to make sure. I, we've been talking about mental health. We also brought up drugs and alcohol. So when I ask this question, I just want to preface that I work in the mental health field during the day and I own a bar. So I deal with both on either side.
I don't know if I should congratulate you or feel sorry for you.
I, during the day, I, I have questions about CIT. I want to know what parts you feel of the CIT program were deployed during this apprehension?
Well, I think that, yeah, as, I think a deeper dive needs to be looked at to articulate exactly what those are. But in, in a quick, broad view, I think their CIT begins before they even arrive. And I like to look at de-escalation as not a skill or a technique, and, and I'm not trying to be derogatory to anybody who believes that. I see de-escalation as an outcome. And, and it's an outcome to an actual event. Meaning when time is on your side, you have to use it on officer. Because if you fail to use time when time is not on your side, then you or somebody else is hurt, such as if we could play, we can play the what-if game all day. And, and if, if they didn't grab the lady, and they didn't take her to the ground, and she would have went out and got hit by a car, because there was passing cars, maybe not at that very moment, but, but directly thereafter, I think we'd, I'd be standing here trying to explain why the officers didn't do their job. And so I reluctantly, you know what I'm saying, say that CIT is a whole concept. Being a part of, part of the Crisis Intervention Team really opens up the eyes. And there's a lot of people that want to see Crisis Intervention, the CIT, team training done at the Police Academy. Whereas I think it's actually really important that the officers get a few years on the job. They volunteer and want to go to the training. Because what happens is they look back and they're like, oh my goodness, I might not have been doing the right thing, or I understand now what that experience is. So I would say that they, they began at the moment that, that they got the call. In fact, I believe the officer even tells the co-responder, hey, why don't you get out? Whereas normally they tell the co-responder to stay in until they are confident that the scene's safe.
The, if, individual in the video was restrained at the point that the, the other officer was bitten and was delivering punches, I, I see an officer on the person's back, the person's on the ground. To me, that's restraining. My question is, I deal with people with developmental disabilities and co-occurring mental health issues that are paraplegic and quadriplegic. We're taught in our mental health first aid to stay away from their face when they're in crisis. Wondering, is, is physical apprehension training done? Is that something that officers are trained in? Clearly, if somebody's arms aren't available to them, their legs aren't available to them, their other, only other option is their mouth. So I, I'm trying to understand how we got to the point that the person was able to bite.
Well, I will answer it. First of all, let me go back to your original question, because I think there was a point that was missed. That you were asking about specific things that we may have seen that the deputies utilized that we would say were part of CIT. Part of CIT and de-escalation is not approaching somebody aggressively, not screaming at them, not, you know, closing the distance, talking in a soft tone. Those were things that I know from the initial review of our video that were occurring. There are things that we still have not fleshed out during the investigation process, so I can't answer every single tactic they may or may not used or used correctly until that process is done. But those are some things initially that I saw, that I think directly relate to CIT, and then offering the social worker to come in and respond. To your, to your next question, I don't believe that it's a, and we won't know until a full investigation, investigation is done, that it's a, an absolute fact that she, the subject was restrained. Now, your definition of restrained may be different, but I don't believe that's an, an absolute. And I would say this, that the reason that, from the initial report, the reason that it was in the way of her mouth, if that's the way you presented it, was when they fell to the ground, his arm was underneath her and she landed with it next to her mouth. That is something that is uncontrollable just because of the nature of the event, and that's when she bit his arm initially. So again, I, I say that to say, that full investigation isn't done, and we can look at camera angles and footage and, and splice those things and frame by frame and all of those things. And I can't specifically say to fact what those are until that review is done. And then really quickly, and I know I'm, I'm stepping person to person, Miss Rutherford, you asked, who determines excessive force and how that review process works? I just want to add, that report gets seen at first, first-line supervision level. It then goes to lieutenant, it then goes to a division commander, it then goes to training, and then it will go to internal investigations. So no less than five different people with differing training and experiences will look at that event and make a determination to our command as to where they think that process should go in the future. No less than five independent reviews of that information, which again, has not been done yet. So I don't want to state fact, that, that has not been completed.
Okay. So I know-
Councilman Rutherford, you have a question.
Thanks. I know a Facebook Live is going to be wrote about this. Captain Ewan, could you get the mic for me? I have a couple of questions for you. I know this is going to happen. Two questions. Does the people have the right to question the police about their actions?
Like, if they don't like our actions, they can come down and file a complaint, talk to me. Family came down and spoke to me on Friday. I greeted the family, spoke with them. I get complaints every day, and I don't refuse no one. So they have a, a right to question us. If it's something that I think that should go upstairs, regarding what they tell me, I send it to my bosses. So let them hear the complaint. And we, we look into everything that we think is questionable. We look into every complaint that we think that where the deputy done something wrong. But we get complaints where the deputy hasn't done something wrong also.
Okay, I'm glad. And so we have a community liaison for the city of Pontiac, right? How many, who are those people and where are they located at in the city of Pontiac?
We got five community liaisons in Pontiac. They're all, they're all located within the Pontiac substation.
Okay. And so the reason why I'm asking this is because the community liaison's job is to do what in this situation? To de-escalate the situation, to not make it bigger, correct, when you say so?
Well, our community liaison is to build partnerships with the community.
I can't hear you-
To build partnerships with the community, partnerships with the businesses, and also handle our community complaints.
Okay. My last question, which is most important. This individual who has been known to have a mental illness, who has been diagnosed with a mental illness, who they didn't, the lady didn't feel equipped to handle this individual, because I don't want to be called grandstanding. So my question is, at what point do we as a, as a community get to say who's responsible? Because this could have went like it did in Kentucky, and that's what I'm worried about. And I'm also fearful, because whenever somebody questions the Oakland County Sheriff's, it's a backlash. It becomes threatening. It makes you be fearful for your life, like I do every day. And so I want to make sure that when these instances happen, that people are not weaponizing their position or their badge. Because no one should be fearful to talk to the police, which we absolutely pay about $15 million a year. So my final question is, how do we change the scenario where I don't feel threatened and I don't feel scared and I'm not afraid to drive my car because someone thinks that they have the right to weaponize a, a situation when it's a real situation going in the community? Just a question. Go ahead.
Let me just discuss the prize. It's not 15 million, it's 13 million.
13, I'm sorry.
Last, last, since the money was misappropriated somewhere.
I apologize.
Oh, okay. So I think you have several opportunities to talk to me. Have I ever turned you, turned you away?
No, you haven't. You're great. Keep going.
Okay, so.
You keep going.
Okay, so.
I'm talking about people, but what I'm bringing this up is because if I am, I am a city councilwoman, and I'm afraid to say what I'm about to say because it's going to get used against me. And I don't always feel comfortable with some individuals, because every time I ask something, I'm trying to say defund the police. And this situation is not about defunding. It is about a woman who has mental health, who needed services. So I just want to make sure that if I'm feeling this way, how do you guys deal with that perception so that others don't feel this way when they come ask questions? Because I'm scared now. I'm scared to ask you anything except hi. So that's why I'm asking.
Well, this lady, she needed help. It's up to her family. But if the family would have brought it to us and said she needed help, our community police officers went over there and maybe took the social worker and tried to get him help, just like we did over here on Union Street with the homeless. We just didn't go over and move them from that location. We, we, we provided them counseling. They, they, counseling said, hey, they had a place for them. Then we took them over to Hope Shelter, which they refused. We provided medical care, which they refused. So it's our obligation to help the community, be a part of the community. And we can't build partnerships if we not helping you.
Please remind others of that. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Parker and then Councilman Goodman.
Thank you. As you talked about the training, does that, is that training going to be conducted by a police oversight committee or some other internal committee? And if so, what will be the makeup of that investigative team?
The training or the investigation?
Both? Well, no, I'm talking about the investigation.
So investigation will be done, initially is done by the substation, that part's been done. Substation commander- Substation commanders sign off on a use of force report. They review the report. It goes to the training unit, which that's been expedited already. And so the training unit, Lieutenant Workman is not given his credentials, but he's a Force Science Institute graduate, which basically means that he's trained in looking at human factors and uses of force. So that'll begin there. It'll look at and go through several different use of force instructors, and then ultimately get up to our level, command, senior command, in which they will start looking at, and our job is to articulate a couple of different things. Number one, is there any policy violations? Two, is there any violations of the law? Three, is there any violations of case law? And case law, because not all laws cover what we do or how we do things. There are specific case law. We are in the Sixth Circuit Federal Court of Appeals. So there's Sixth Circuit Court case law, there's Michigan case law, Michigan Supreme Court case law, and then the McDaddy of Omaha, which is the US Supreme Court. So we look at and apply all those. And if there is violations, we articulate what they are and specifically what the case that they violated. Those are, I like to call those the easy ones, right? When it's, when it's a clear violation, that's, that's easy for us to punt, if you will, for internal affairs then to look at and do a further dip and, a deep dive, and for discipline to be looked at or assessed. The not-so-easy ones are when the tactics may not be so easy, or the specific tactics. So those are the other things we look at. And by doing that, because every one of those cross both Lieutenant Workman and my desk, we look at those and we help develop what we'll call as a five-year plan for training. Meaning we're always looking and see, anytime we start seeing trends or start seeing something, then we address it with the entire agency. Along with, let's say there was a policy violation, but not a law violation, immediately we institute remedial training for the individual officer. So, on Ms. Rutherford, but she ran away.
Love her.
Oh, never mind. I'll save that for later. I was going to tell her something, but.
Okay, got a question.
Yes, sir.
I think I have one A and B question. Having examined this to the fullest that you guys have examined it, what are your takeaways from this teachable moment?
Well, I would say we haven't examined it to its fullest potential yet.
I thought the investigation was complete.
No, the, the initial review of the incident, looking at the incident quickly at the substation level, and then we will dive into a complete exhaustive investigation, meaning we will go frame by frame, word by word, audio. We will dive into that thoroughly in our review process. So that, it would be disingenuous for me to answer what we, what our thoughts were, because I think that it's unfair, both to the family and to the sheriff's department, to make statements that are not based in fact. I want there to be statements based in fact. I understand that there is an emotional response to watching that video. I will never understand what it's like to be a person of color living in Pontiac. I will never understand that. Although I do try to understand or listen to, to those passions, to those complaints, to those, those fears. And I think it's imperative that when I do that, and if I'm committed to doing that, that I do a full review of that incident and then provide you that answer, because it's not fair to the family to do otherwise.
Okay.
Order in the chambers.
And if I could just add one more thing. The reason for that is because I like to think of that as like being a union rep. Like, it's really easy to look at the union agreement and look at an employee and say, that's why we're doing this, is because it's written. The same reason here. When we look at an investigation, we look at a review, and whether it's a presentation, whether it's meeting with the family, whether it's a lawsuit, whatever it is, it's easy when a full, complete investigation is done. Because then you play the video, or you play specific things, you stop it, and you apply that specific policy and that case law. You say, this is why this can be done, or this is why that can't be done, and this is why that person is charged or isn't charged, or whatever the case is. This is why it's so important to do that, that, right from the, from the get-go. Ms. Rutherford, you stepped off for a second. We talked about remedial training for the officers for a second. I'll tell you that my open, I have an open-door policy along with Lieutenant Workman here. If you're not treated fairly, number one, I'm disgusted. And it's not because you're a councilwoman, it's because you're a resident of the county. So if you have a complaint, and even if it is on Captain Ewing.
It's not him, but I have-
Order, order.
Sorry. Listen, that's one of the things that, and Lieutenant Workman teaches a couple of different classes for the communities. I'm more mortified and more upset when I see different things that are in the public, in social media, when it comes to things. So one of the things that the sheriff's office is very, very strict on is if we have a person who may use force properly but is not professional, that still gets remedial trained. Meaning, we'll review that, and we'll say, yep, that force is appropriate, yep, that should've happened, yep, that was in policy. But he was a not polite, or he was unprofessional beforehand. So that deserves remedial training, and possibly even discipline because of that. So you shouldn't be feeling that way, and none of the citizens should be feeling that way. So that's something I would welcome, that if you have any of those complaints, that's what our internal affairs is really for, is to make sure that we are delivering professional services to the community.
All right, we're resuming the speakers list. Councilwoman James, Councilman Nicholson, Councilwoman Rutherford, and Councilman Goodman will be our last to ask questions of the special presentation. The conversation can continue, of course, during the resolution deliberations. Councilwoman James, you have the floor.
Yes, first of all, I want to say thank you for taking the time to come out and to give us an explanation of what happened. As you do your review, what I'm wondering is, when you're looking at specifically the use of force, are you also going to be just looking at the whole incident in terms of the appropriateness of reaction? Because what we, what, you know, what I see is a mental health crises that was treated as a police, you know, a law enforcement problem. And they, they, you know, they just, it was, it was, it was a disconnect. So I'm wondering, you know, as we step back and look and try to understand what happened, will your investigation look at that?
Yes, ma'am.
Not, not just, did we use too much force?
Yes, ma'am.
But did we make the right calls? Did we make the right decisions in how to respond to that situation? Will your investigation deal with that as well?
Yes, ma'am, for a couple of different reasons. And if I can just articulate, like I said, besides them going across both of our desks and the use of force experts in our training unit, we look at them for that totality, right? Are we seeing a trend? Are we looking at different things? And addressing not only remedial training with the individual officers, if that so requires, but also to look at whether or not that this particular, or a particular incident or a particular situation needs to be trained throughout the entire agency. And that's how we develop our reality-based training. Like I said, we're on a five-year training program, where we really have our training laid out for five years. We tweak different things. With this case, ma'am, I would beg to differ, just from the preliminary review, though, is that although this, we want to call this, because we can on the backside, we know the end result, we know that there is a mental illness. At the very beginning, we have an individual who is believed to be high or drunk that is attempting to light a rag, that is, that's a felony, it's prepped to burn, attempting to commit arson and set something on fire. So we have a crime. Although they didn't rush up there right away, I will give you that, and they started using some things, I would say that it quickly got turned. I would say that there are other cases that we can look at that specifically maybe are a better definition of what you have defined as the wrong-
Mental health crisis.
The, a mental health crisis where the wrong thing has played out. And one last final little example. In one of our townships, we had a subject that was in a mental health crisis, sitting at a picnic table, threatening to hurt themselves with a butcher knife. I ask the officers, we make this scenario go. Now, the officers know that scenarios only go three or five minutes. And we ask them to go in and handle it, right? And so we set up a room a little bit smaller than this, and we take, go handle that problem. And what we expect them to do is to stay away and de-escalate. They're sitting down, they have a knife, there's no one else in danger at that very moment. That's what we expect. Whereas we can see certain situations and certain circumstances that apply throughout the United States that where officers didn't. There's one case out of North Carolina where the officer's tasered and tackled, and the subject actually died after 34 seconds of the officer's being on scene. I back that back up with our case that happened in the township. And I asked the officers after they go through the scenario, because some of them, some of them try and pull their taser out, and we're like, whoa, whoa, what are you doing? Someone trying to run up to them and pepper spray them, or someone trying to do different things. We do remedial training. And we ask them, like, how long would you wait? And what the answer is, until I can't wait anymore. And then we bring up the case, and we say, listen, for that particular case, the officers were on scene for three hours until that came to a resolution. Because time was on their side and they had that ability. In this particular case, from the very, very preliminary, that, that time was not on their side, and that's why they took action, so. But again, I reserve that opinion to its finalized.
This afternoon, I spoke with the sheriff. I gave him a call, and like, it don't matter if she was mentally ill, it don't matter if it was someone else. That action that we took that day, it don't look good. The appearance is not, is not good for our city at all. So I want the sheriff to remove that type of action, that type of training. And he agreed that we don't take a look at it, we'll sit down and meet next week. And hopefully, we come back with a decision where that won't happen anymore. Like closed fist strikes with somebody resisting to gain compliance. I just want it to go away. So, because it's not, it's not good for our community. So the sheriff said, we'll sit down next week, we'll discuss it, and most likely tide, and pause just hearing about it now, because I didn't tell him before, but we might be changing that, so.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Rutherford, Councilman Nicholson, Councilman Goodman, Deputy Mayor Stevens, and then we must move on.
Captain Ewing, we know that they are not, the officers that are in question about excessive force cannot be, are not being suspended, correct?
Your, your opinion was excessive force?
No, I'm saying that people, let me, let me, let me restate it. In my opinion, where excessive force was used, they're not being suspended, correct?
That's correct.
And you don't have the authority to suspend them, correct?
My bosses reviewed the video. They have, they have the authority to expend it if they thought the deputy was in violation of the policy.
Right, so my question is this. Can those two officers be removed from serving in the city of Pontiac?
Like, once you start removing officers when they didn't do nothing wrong, who do you want to have to work in Pontiac? Yeah, yeah, you know, well, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, well, let me, let me rephrase that, okay? That haven't been charged of anything yet, haven't been found of any wrongdoing. So, so, so we need to be real careful with that. It's not, it's not like, but the mayor, if he don't want someone here, he can remove him from the city.
Say that one more time, so they-
If the mayor don't want a deputy here, he can remove him from the city.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Order, order in the chambers. We want to be able to have you adequately here and engage in the subject matter this evening, and we'll proceed accordingly. Councilman Nicholson, you have the floor.
The, you said they reviewed the video and made the decision that they wouldn't be suspended at that time. Is there a, I, I'm, I'm, I have, I understand staffing. I understand minimum policing and wanting, and sometimes your hands get tied. I've never been in the position where there's an allegation with video footage that we clearly said we didn't like it, where that decision was mine to make. That's where I'm confused, is to say, I mean, I've been in situations where anybody makes an allegation, regardless of whether or not we believe it's true, and an investigation happens and they return. I, I think the tremendous amount of liability, the nervousness, the tension, I think all of that alone adds up to that opportunity. But how bad is it for us to say, I mean, from a staffing perspective, from a, does it put the city at risk to not have the, you know, I don't know if it's one or two, or what the decision, you know, how many in question, but the alternative, not having them here, does that put us in a place of, what is, what is the place of risk?
We force in two to three people a day already for each shift. So we take a body away, we got people coming from other communities that don't know our community. They're coming from Rogers Hills, they're coming from Clark City, they're coming from Commerce. They don't know our community. They don't know how to get around in our community. But they're coming here and like, you know, these guys wanted to be here, they wanted the help, and they want our community to prosper. But when you bring somebody else in and they don't want to be here, that's, that's a problem itself, so. But these guys actually want to be here, like you said, until the investigation is completed, you know, they could be removed, but right now, it's not completed. So we don't want to rush to judgment. And like, like, like all of us, and me being a black man, like, all of us have maybe been accused of something. I might have been accused of something. But I want my day in court, I want to be heard out. What make it different for them?
I, I'm not asserting that it's different. I think that just the, the, the normal course of an investigation when a serious allegation's been made, I was under, what we're trying to understand-
Usually, usually-
What you articulated was-
If it's a shooting-
I'm sorry, it's, I have the floor.
Okay.
That it's not the, the problem, that, that, the concern that, that you're, that you're bringing up is that if these two weren't here, we would have two others that wouldn't know the city as well, might not give us the same commitment level?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, but I would like to add, if it was a shooting or something like that, if somebody was shot in self-defense, whatever reason, they'd be suspended immediately with pay until the investigation is completed.
Thank you.
Councilman Goodman.
Thank you. So to make just an overall statement before we get into this, I do want to say that I think that, as we learned last week in not having body cameras, that they, that may have helped us in this situation in terms of gathering information about the situation that we're currently facing. But to ask some very pointed questions, in regards to the CIT training, for these two officers, when was that training completed, if you know that?
They graduated from the course June 10th.
June 10th was the graduation.
So, and you said, how long is the training?
Forty hours, one week.
So, do you feel that 40 hours is enough time to adequately train a, an officer with the power that they do, with the equipment and weapons that they do, that a week, 40 hours, is enough time to adequately train them to deal with people with different forms of mental illness or distress?
I do. I am a CIT facilitator, meaning I've been teaching CIT as the course facilitator and able to teach the actual courses themselves in the class. Although what we do is we bring in subject matter experts to teach on the medical portions, on the medications. We bring in daily, we bring in community members who are suffering from some type of mental illness and to give their life story. We run through scenarios. Like I said, the new curriculum has the scenarios embedded throughout the course. And what I do, or what, what I believe is that at the end of the 40 hours, they are much better trained to be on this, and be qualified to be on a crisis intervention team. We follow the Memphis-Tennessee model, which is also the CIT international model of CIT training. Would I agree to you that they should be in training and we can make it a month course? Listen, this is why I, I'm the division captain commander of emergency responsive awareness. I live training and love training. I quickly realized, in fact, I was in the city of Pontiac as a sergeant in 2011 to 13, and they had to drag me to the training unit to the point where I was working overtime here just because I couldn't leave the city. I like doing policing, I like the city of Pontiac. But what I quickly learned was the importance of training and having a professional- Hey, knock it off. Of having, and she must agree, of having a professional policing force that is not only trained but equipped. We need them all individually to be able to make decisions. Protocols and plans and policies are only guides. The individual officer that's on the scene, I need to make sure that they have the ability to make the proper decision. Because if not, then I don't need them, I'll just go work it, if that makes sense.
So just one problem that I have with that, as a person who has worked as an educator, who has worked in a school building with children who have IEPs, for example. I, many of us are trained to obviously learn adequate restraints for children, which is, I'd say, an even more difficult process, because you want to be more delicate with children. But that is a constant and ongoing training.
Yes.
I know when it comes to working in a mental health facility, they have more than 40 hours a week. And that's not to say that officers need to be trained to the same scrutiny and stringent process that someone who works in a mental health facility day in and day out should have. But I do have serious concerns that a week's worth of training is enough to teach someone- adequately to handle these situations.
Well, I'd love to expand on that, sir, but in, in following the, the model and the policies in which CIT International has established, and Michigan CIT has established with the MCOS, the Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Services, we're following that. But that's also why I've been working with, and Lieutenant Workman and I sit on the Oakland County CIT Board, which also is implemented without any cause and without any reason to do this, is to implement advanced training. So, they also, once you graduate from, from the 40-hour CIT course, we want you to go to an annual, one-day, eight-hour course per year. Now, that's combined with the individual officers' training that they get, which we get approximately 40 hours of additional in-service throughout the year to include firearms, subject control, and anything else in other, that the, the agency offers. So, there's CIT youth, there's CIT advanced training, so, again, Commissioner Cavell knows how much we are pushing for different types of training, but I would say that, yes, I'm, I'm confident that when they graduate, even those that are voluntold, which we don't encourage, that even those voluntold that come to the class, at the end of the class, they realize how important the information that we've given them and how much that's prepared them to, to handle situations better.
Your continued follow-up questions, Councilman.
First, I'll say, thank you for bringing up a friend of mine, Commissioner Cavell, from down in Ferndale. So, I have a follow-up question. When was the last time that the Oakland County Sheriff's Office updated or reviewed their, their policies?
So, we do an annual review, and I believe our, oh, sorry, which one?
I guess in, in terms of processes when it comes to policing different communities.
Yeah, I'll let Lieutenant Workman.
We're also in the middle of a review.
We, we look at the, if you're talking about a use of force policy or other policies when it comes to training, we try to review certain policies every single year, including use of force. That is mandated, we look at that policy every year to make sure that any things that change with police reform or legislation gets updated in that policy. Currently, we're also going through an accreditation program through the state of Michigan to be accredited. They are looking at every single policy written, and that will be standardized across the state with people that are being accredited. So, that process is being undertaken right now.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah. And so, also with that, so, I guess, like, when was the last time that there was any, like, major or comprehensive updates that happened in terms of that policy? Would you be able to give me, like?
I wouldn't be able to give you a specific date when that last time, it was specific, like a comprehensive review. We review that policy often. Same thing with our EVO, Emergenced Vehicle Operation Policy, Domestic Violence, there's certain policies that get looked at periodically, and then there are comprehensive reviews that are done for other policies.
Thank you. And so, the last question that I have, and this one is kind of not directly directed towards you, is actually towards administration or legal counsel. If I remember correctly, there is something in our city charter that is from the time in which we had our own police department. But there is something in the charter in regards to a police trial board or police citizens oversight board, correct?
I believe that's correct.
And so, I, I know that's currently not in place, and we currently don't have our own police department, but I do think it's very much worth seeking, especially from the city's perspective, any way of trying to reinstitute that or some form of it, especially as I know, and I could be wrong, about the closeness of this, but I know that the county is revisiting the sheriff's contracts in a couple of different ways. So, I think, and I think that we as a city should put some more pressure and see if we can, see if we can force their hand a bit, because I think this is a perfect example of just the, the, the lack of local control that happens when we lose direct access to our police department. And so, I just have one very last question directed towards you all. And this is solely a matter of perspective, given the work that you do. Do you feel that, that the double-digit-plus number of strikes were, were like appropriate for, for the situation?
I don't know that that's a statement of fact. I can't address that because I did not count the, I do not know, based on what I've seen so far, how many strikes were delivered, where those strikes were, what the result of those strikes were, what preceded those, it would be disingenuous and not respectful to the process to try to answer that question now. I will more than happy meet with you and discuss any of those things once the review is done, sir.
Thank you.
Finally, Deputy Mayor Stevens, you have the floor for questions.
Thank you, Council President. First, I just want to thank the sheriff's office for being here tonight. And I will be brief, I just have a few questions. The first, just, I want to inquire about the officers themselves. So, I understand that they were bitten, were they transported directly to the hospital after the scene was cleared?
Yes, they, they took themselves to the hospital.
And they've been discharged now?
Yes.
Okay. So, then, during tonight, it was stated that there are violations of law and violations of policy. If someone could expound on that, just, just a little bit briefly, and my question is, can, can you walk through the whole process of what is your internal investigation, and when does that internal investigation actually become an external investigation?
So, I don't believe, we don't have a external investigation, per se, as, as opposed to if you look at our training unit investigates, and we review every use of force, every pursuit, driving-related crashes and so forth. And what we do is we look at that for three main things. Number one, tactics. Is there good tactics or bad tactics? If there's bad tactics, we'll note that, and we will give remedial training. If then, we look at that and we say, that's a violation of policy, they can't do that, but it's not a violation of law, it's just a violation of a policy. One, we, we review our policy to make sure that that's the right policy to be having. Two, a lot of our policies also, well, they do coincide with the law. When a law requires certain things to get done, our policies adopt exactly what that law is. So, if there is that policy violation, we, one, implement remedial training for the officer, we note that, hey, knock it off, we note that for later, and then we forward that to the, the sheriff's office senior command for, for disciplinary review. We advise them that here's the specific policy that they violated, here's what they did, here's where it is, and the video and what they, how they did that. And then that is separate. So, we look at training, it's completely different from discipline. Third is when we have violations of the law, right? And this one's an easier one. And as a leader, I will tell you, as advising new sergeants, this is the easy part, right? Is when they look at a video and they're like, oh, Lord, you're, you can't do that. That is against the law, that's a crime. That's easy, because they can punt that, and it immediately goes up. We could, we could discuss a what-if, and, and again, don't think that we take the review, the quick review of this lightly. We, if this was completely different, and I don't even want to even say those words, but if this was completely different, completely unjustified actions that would, let's just say hypothetically, they walked up and did a, a strike and there was no reason whatsoever, those officers would be suspended. Those officers would be, you understand what I'm saying, sir? Like, it's not, when it's easy to look at, don't get me wrong, we won't just keep them in the city or just keep them on board. No one's more upset when we see things like that. So, when it, when it's the law, then what happens is that goes to senior command. Senior command then has their official Internal Affairs Unit, that that's solely what they do, they do a couple of different things. That's solely what they do regarding personnel. They do homicides and several other things, along with the city of Pontiac, but their other sole job is, is basically professional development, and to make sure that the agency is working in a professional manner. They do their internal investigations, whether they're criminal or internal, and then they present that. If it's a criminal case, that criminal case is presented to the prosecutor's office. If there's, after that, then it internal would be had. If it's not criminal, then they would do just an internal investigation, which are looking at policy violations that could include up to termination. But again, those are all hypotheticals, not for this particular situation, until the review gets done. And again, I don't want to be unjust in assessing any of that.
So, then, if I could take your response and try to repeat it to you to see if, if I have interpreted it correctly. In, in any situation, you do an internal investigation, and during your internal investigation, you make a determination whether or not you believe that it was simply a violation of sheriff's office policy, in which case, you determine, okay, does this person need training, or does this person need to reprimand, or does this person need both? And reprimand is just, you know, a verbal or written warning up, up to and including termination.
Yes, sir, and the only thing I change on that is, we do a use of force review. I wouldn't call it an internal investigation, although I could see the general public calling it an investigation.
Okay.
We do a review of every single use of force, anything past putting handcuffs on, if there's any type of resistance, if there's any type of force used by the officer. Same thing for driving, any crash-related, any pursuit-related, pursuit termination technique-related. We do internal reviews to make sure that it's within policy and tactics.
And so, then, after you determine that this was outside of your internal sheriff's policies, then you ask yourself, do we believe that this was a violation of the law? And if it was a violation of the law, you then contact the appropriate prosecutor's office to say, hey, we have a violation of law that you now need to take over.
Correct, with, with one other little step that I'll throw in there. When we're looking at that, we need to, our review process articulates what the policy violation is, the number, where it's at, and how they did it specifically and articulate. And again, that's where I defer back to, correct, and the exact same thing with the law. What law did it violate? The same that we would do a criminal case if we were out on the street with, with civilians, okay? We would do the exact same thing. That process, on the criminal side and the internal side, once it goes up, is done by our Internal Affairs Unit. That Internal Affairs Unit then prepares a case just like they would a criminal case, and then would present it to the prosecutor's office.
And so, then, just a, I'm almost done, just a few more questions here. So, with the case that is actually in front of us, have you made a determination yet whether or not you believe it was a violation of law?
I would say that it's not a clear cut that I can just look at it and say that person shouldn't be, shouldn't be working in the street.
No, 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 that's what I say, have you made that determination yet? And the answer is no, you've not made that determination yet.
Correct.
Okay. And so, then, the, I, I guess this would actually be, I think, my final question. No, two more questions. So, the sheriff's office has specific contracts with a multitude of different communities. Does, to the best of your knowledge, do the contracts in each community have different sub-policies where, you know, one community may say, hey, we have this threshold, and another community may say, well, our threshold is even higher, or our threshold is lower?
And threshold for?
For, for use of force or other policy determinations that you may have.
So, I believe all of our contracts are exactly the same.
Okay.
But on the threshold concept, I would say, sir, that the threshold is simply what the law is and what our policy is.
Okay. And so, then, my, my last question, and this is to, for the understanding of the public, because we have different nomenclature, as I was saying, internal investigation, you're like, no, not investigation or review. What would be a case or an instance, and I understand that this is not that case, but what would be a case or an instance when the sheriff's office would say, you know, we believe, we, we may internally believe that there is no violation of our policy or even a violation of the law, but we would like an external agency to actually come and do this review? And that, that's my final question.
I don't think I'm qualified to answer that, I know we don't do that.
Okay, thank you.
But one example I have for our review process, where it turns into a, what we'll call as investigation, is say a pursuit. If we review a pursuit, and the first thing is that the officer's not using his siren, that's a violation of the law, if you will, or violation of policy. They run a stop sign without yielding to it. Whether they hurt someone or not, that's a, that's a policy violation, and that's a violation of the law. Immediately, we're starting remedial training, immediately, we're, we're starting to start a, start a memo to, to advise what's going to, or to advise senior command that a more thorough investigation needs to be done, or we do that deep dive and articulate all those things, and they can assess those. So, that would be examples.
I'd like to thank the city council, Deputy Mayor for having us here today. I hope we answered all your questions, I hope you, you take away what we, some of the things that we said, and, but it was a pleasure coming in, in front of you today, and we appreciate you, and we appreciate the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. This special presentation has concluded. I'll share from my colleagues, we discussed at our special meeting this weekend, that you would like to see more consistent application of Robert's Rules of Order and parliamentary procedure. When you are given the floor for a speaker's list, out of courtesy, you can ask a follow-up question, but to allow for all members of the body to have their time on the floor and circulate that, please keep it to one follow-up question, so we can ensure a smooth and orderly procedure this evening. We are now at the second special presentation this evening. If you could please clear behind the podium, we'd like to call up Oxford High School student Zoe Toure, a Pontiac resident. She has really made, I would say, an international impression, and has represented the Pontiac community well in her advocacy for gun violence prevention. And we, on behalf of the Pontiac City Council, in partnership and in collaboration with Mayor Tim Greimel, are extending a tribute to her this evening, but we first want to give her the floor to tell her story and to share with the Pontiac community a little bit about herself, if she's willing. All right, welcome this evening to the Pontiac City Council.
Do I just take this off? Okay, I can't figure this out. Okay, thank you. Thank you to the city of Pontiac, the mayor, and Commissioner Powell for having me today. I don't want to say too much and like hold up anybody's time, but just the recent work that I've been doing in the gun violence prevention space has definitely been a really big blessing for me, and I was in a completely different space a year ago, so thank you to my parents. There's my dad right there in his like African outfit, and then my mom right there. So, definitely thank you to them for making me kind of do it, because I was not in a very good space a year ago after the tragedy at my school, so thank you so much. But just to thank the Oxford community as well, because I wouldn't be here without them, so I want to give a shout-out to a few of the people that are here for me right now. But I love you all, and I wouldn't be here without you all, so, thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to name-check your parents, since they're with us this evening?
What, I'm sorry?
Would you like to name-check your parents that are with us this evening?
Oh, yeah, so that's from Marjorie, right there. Oh, stop. Stop, none of that, that's enough. And that's Vicky Brent Toure.
And before we present you with this evening's tribute, want to give the floor to my colleagues and the deputy mayor to be able to offer feedback and questions. President Protem Kirington, you have the floor.
Well, I just want to say that the 6th District is very proud of you. I know that you've been through a traumatic experience, you and your, you and your classmates, but you went to the forefront, and you represented, not only your school, but you also represented the city very well. And, and I'm someone that's seen you grow up in the 6th District, and I was so proud of you when I heard you talk at, at DC.
Thanks.
So, again, continue to be that light concerning gun violence in this country. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Goodman.
I will say, it's especially heartwarming to see you up there as a person, as from the, the exact same generation as you, who has watched everything that we've seen. Everything from, well, hearing about Columbine and Virginia Tech, to actually having to deal with the aftermath of Stoneman Douglas, like, and then obviously, right here at home, which is something I never thought I'd see happen. And to have to unfortunately watch another young person have to, to join the fight and change is, is always disheartening. But it is very heartwarming to know that there are people like you who are really going to put themselves out there and fight for the change. So, I, I don't know what to say besides, thank you for all of your hard work, and I'm glad to be able to be in your presence on this side from, from over there. So, again, thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you.
Others that wish to have the floor. Deputy Mayor Calhoun Stevens.
So, I, I can tell that you are not a natural person who just wants to talk and talk and talk, but I would, I would really encourage you to actually tell the public, because on here it says, "special presentation," and we, we know a little bit about what you did, but a lot of people sitting in this chamber and watching this on television don't know. So, if you could just tell them, just even in the two-minute segment, because I, as the councilman said, we are. as the councilman said, we are actually very proud, very proud of the fact that you are from here, but just very proud of what you're doing, and we want to share that with the world.
So I basically wrote something, but we were like a little bit confused about the details, so I ended up not bringing it in. But for people that don't know, so I'm 18 years old, I'm a survivor at, or from Oxford High School, and we had a tragedy back in November of 2021, so it was definitely a very hard road to like navigate. And I'll kind of tell a story that I tell like most outlets and stuff. So basically, we were kind of at home, and I was in a really, really bad space dealing with everything that happened at school. And my parents were like, you know what, you should just get out and do something productive. And I just wanted to be like, just stop, like, don't leave me alone. And then March for Our Lives, which is a really big national gun organization or gun movement for like preventing gun violence, reached out to me and asked me to speak at the Michigan Capitol. And so at first, it was a very big no for me, and I wasn't really keen on it. And then my parents, which we just mentioned before, were like, oh, just go for it. It'll be really, really good for you to get out and kind of do something about your situation. And so after that, it became kind of like a really, really big part of my life. So just make sure I stay in that space and kind of do things and speak up for the peers at my school that couldn't speak up. So like, whenever I do a speech, I'll say to speak up for Tate, for Madison, for Hannah, for Justin. So to kind of be those voices for them, because they couldn't be here to share that themselves.
Thank you. With that, the members of the city council, the deputy mayor, and Commissioner Powell, and we're really grateful for Commissioner Powell for elevating this opportunity and inviting our Pontiac neighbor to join us this evening. If you could please join us, and if the family members would like to as well, no pressure or obligation for us to present you, we'll come to you.
Are we all going down? I'm scared.
All of us, my? Yes. On behalf of your 61,000 neighbors here in the great city of Pontiac, the Pontiac City Council, Mayor Tim Greimel, and Deputy Mayor Calphane Stevens, present to you a tribute from the city of Pontiac, acknowledging your hard work and advocacy for gun violence prevention in our community and in our country. Bless you, and hooray!
Thank you. Oh, are you smiling?
You get it? All right. Thank you very much for being with us tonight. Thank you for the work that you do and the opportunity for us as a community to celebrate you. It's an honor to call you a neighbor.
Thank you. I'm gonna cry.
With that, we move on to our next special presentation. We bring to the podium representatives from the Oakland 80 Initiative by Oakland County.
Hello, hello. Good evening. Good evening, council, deputy mayor, commissioner. My name is Tanya Medlock, and I am one of the Oakland 80 navigators, or let me take that back. I'm a career and education navigator through an initiative called the Oakland 80 Initiative. And one of the things that we are doing is we're working with the citizens of Oakland County to obtain post-secondary education degrees or industry-recognized credentials. And the way that we do this, we work with MyReConnect, Michigan MyReConnect, and we work with individuals who want to go back to college to get their degree. But what we do, when we're doing that, is we navigate through career exploration. We assist them with their financial aid or applications. And we also assist through the American Rescue Plan with supportive services that would assist individuals with things like computers if they needed that to start school, or books, or maybe even if they have a emergency, a utility bill that they need to have assistance paying. And that way, we can alleviate some of the stress that comes with trying to complete or go to school with some of the supportive services that we have. I'm gonna let my colleagues speak as well.
Well, thank you, Tanya. We're just excited about this initiative. This initiative, I think, is something that's been long overdue for America, not only Oakland County. This initiative was, is a spinoff of the Governor's 60 by 30 Initiative, where you wanted 60% of Michigan residents to have an industry-recognized credential or a college degree by 2030. We might have heard about that one. Well, Oakland County is already there, and they're being aggressive in terms of going to 80% in terms of industry-recognized credential attainment and post-secondary degree. So our role is simply this, you know, there's a lot of resources in Oakland County that our citizens deserve and need an opportunity to be guided to and helped with. Our job is simply this, is to help connect the dots. We don't have anything excellent in ourselves, but we do have a lot of people within this community that are doing a lot of great things in terms of helping people. So we just want to make sure that we've got that pathway, and we've got that connection with those people. So if you need a one-stop shop to help you through that process, we can do that for you. I look at it kind of like going through the health club. You know, you can go to the health club, lift some weights, you know, and walk around and, you know, look real good, maybe, and get some marginal results. But if you had a trainer to kind of help you understand the equipment and understand how to use it for the specific results that you wanted, then you would get more specific results. And that's kind of what we do. We would be remiss if we did not recognize our other team members that are here today. Our manager, Tamara Miles, is here today. Just raise your hand, Tamara. And then Rachel Dixon, who's also a navigator for the Southfield area. We're kind of spread out all over the county. There's about eight of us. Tanya is your representative here in Pontiac. I kind of help over in Novi, and I help Tanya with Pontiac, and we've got others, other places in the, in the community. So we're just excited about being here. We wanted to be here to tell you that we were here, and I, we know that we can't do this by ourselves. We're gonna take, we're gonna need the community in terms of making this happen. So anyone in this room that has either want, knows someone that's wanting to go back to school and might have said, okay, Adam, given up, you know, I've tried it, life got in the way, I can't do it anymore, help them contact us. We'll try to help them back in the process. And the second thing that we're looking for is just the people in this community that are trying to do the hard work that we're trying to do. We want to partner with you. So with that, city council, I don't know, we'll leave that with that, and we're just glad you had the opportunity to come here and talk to you today.
For questions and feedback, President Pro Tem Carrington.
First, thank you for coming to the city hall and telling us about Oakland 80 Initiative. Do you guys have a contact number that the citizens of Pontiac can give you a call?
We absolutely do.
We have a 1-800 number. And just so that you all know, there, we are spread out throughout the county. I am at the Oakland Community College, and we're also based sometimes at the Oakland University campus. And I'm trying to look at this. I can't read this.
Okay, okay. Well, easiest way to get in contact with us is Oakland 80, it's on the county website, Oakland 80 Navigators, Oakland 80, and they will take you to our website here.
And I do, I do have my number. We have an 800 number as well on the website, but my number is 248-233-4367. I am the person in the Pontiac area that works with individuals that want to go back to school. I also just want to say this to everyone. I'm a person, I am a product of Pontiac. I born and raised, went to school here. I started my education journey probably when I got out of the Army back in 1997, and I had to pause because of life. And because of life, I had to stop, and I had to work, and I had to go to school, stop, go to work, raise my kids. And what that did for me was it kind of prolonged my journey in getting my education. Had I had an initiative like Oakland 80, I probably would have finished much quicker, and I probably would have been further along in my career. And I say this because a lot of times when we do these things, we don't consider that life happens while we're doing them. And sometimes, I've talked to many people who tell me, well, I was going to school and I had to stop because I had some health issues or I had a family emergency. And one of the things I can't push more is that we are here to help you leave some of those barriers and to help you make it through your journey to get a better education, so you can put back into your community. And it also feels good to say I accomplished something. So, any other questions?
They're asking for a repeat of the number, Mr.
248-233-4367. And I'll just repeat it one more time, so everybody understands. This initiative is to assist individuals who are trying to obtain a associate's degree or an industry-recognized credential. Any other questions?
Deputy Mayor Stevens, you have the floor.
Not a question. I just went to your website. Your 800 number is 888-559-4360.
Thank you.
That's 888-559-4360. And if you Google Oakland 80, it'll show you exactly the link on the Oakland County's website, which is oakgov.com.
And you just click on the navigator for the city that's closest to you.
Thank you. With that, the special presentation concludes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next special presentation that's on the agenda is the Pontiac School District Recent Developments and Milledge Restoration Passage. We did have Pontiac School Board President Gil Garrett with us, if he'd like to be recognized for this or for recognition of elected officials. Are there any other elected officials that wish to have the floor? Recognition of elected officials. Oakland County Commissioner Angela Powell, you have the floor.
Hey, could you guys please clear the back way, please?
Somebody had keys.
Did you leave your keys? Is these yours?
Are these yours?
Oh, they have. Oh, good evening.
Are they? Because I can put them back. Okay. Good evening, council, deputy mayor. Thank you for the time today. One thing I want to address is, just to explain to residents here, the Oakland County Sheriff's Department is a department that I govern. And when we had this incident last week, yes, I got calls. And when I got back in town as of Monday, I immediately requested a meeting with the Sheriff's Department to kind of go over things, right? Because, yes, I also too can join community members. I was very concerned about the situation. I had the call with the Sheriff's Department, and what I did was I called the Sheriff's Department, a meeting with them with our leadership. So that's Commissioner Dave Woodward, our chair, our vice chair, Marsha Gershson, and myself. We reviewed the tape, just to let you know. I was able to review that tape from start to finish. And I'mma just say this. The punching that occurred in the video, I was very concerned about that. And what I've asked the Sheriff's Department, and I'm happy that you all got to hear from them today, because part of them being here today was my request as well. And one, I want to stop and pause and thank council. Thank you for allowing them to be on the agenda today, so that you all can hear firsthand, and at least be able, as council members, because you all represent this community too, and deputy mayor, to ask the questions that you needed to gain the clarity for the community members that has been concerned, because just like my phone was ringing, I know every last one of y'all was getting calls about the situation. So thank you. When I asked them, I asked them to break down frame by frame, because, yes, I'm very concerned about that punching incident, but also to community, it's called protocol process in a situation. So at the end of the day, like we heard from them today, they have to go through an extensive process in regards to reviewing that. But as your commissioner, that's what I requested. I requested for them to come and approach and give their clarity today, and I requested for that matter, especially with the punching, is what I was concerned with, to be reviewed, to see if that was proper protocol with the Sheriff's Department. And I was told, just like everybody else today, that it's a process in that review. So when we get that updo, I mean, that update, sorry, I know that council will be open to allowing that, and I want to encourage you all to request Sheriff's Department to come back and give an update of what that investigation was, so that you all can ask further questions on how did they get there, and actually possibly break it down frame by frame for this community to see, and make sure that we gain the clarity of understanding. And one thing I will say, I want to commend Captain Ewing, because he took it a step further, because he's concerned. And he's asked leadership of the Sheriff's Department to review that whole process and just that policy period with this, I guess, their excessive force when punching, right? So I wanted to point that out. You all asked about body cams. Now-
Order in the chambers. Order in the chambers. Commissioner Powell has the floor.
You all asked about the body cameras. I was a firm advocate for body cameras, okay? Now, COVID, let me see that, let me say, commissioners, I can't remember the timeframe, but I think it was like we were running in a COVID still when we were trying to get it processed. And everybody know that there are manufacturer supplies delays, all that type of stuff going on. Well, guess what? That's what we're experiencing with the body cams. But let me say this, as of Monday, our chair, Dave Woodward, basically sent the message to the vendor. We ain't delaying this no more. No more delays. They gave us a timeframe. I'm not going to quote that, but I'm going to let you know, and y'all can account me to this. They say we supposed to have them very soon. Very soon is at least in the next 60 days. And the reason is, no, 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 it's a process, again. It's a process. And at the end of the day, excuse me, I have the floor, and at the end of the day, that is what's going on. And I'm going to promise you all that y'all can hold me accountable to keep y'all informed of that process, even as a community, because it's very, I'm very concerned. I am one of the voters of the 11, because the Republican Party ain't vote with us. It was all solid Democrats that said, no, we getting them body cams. So figure it out. Because we did get some pushback, we did. But like I stressed, that situation that happened in Detroit where that cop, because I'm not just trying to protect our citizens. At the end of the day, we got good cops here, too. And I have to tread that fine line as you, as your commissioner governing our Sheriff's Department that protects us. And at the end of the day, like I told them, that stuff happened in Detroit, and if that body cam wasn't on that man, Detroit would have went crazy when that cop killed that guy. And he the one that shot the first, he shot the gun first. The body cam protected us in that situation. So with that being said, I just wanted to let you all know that we are working on it. We have sent the message to the vendor that the timeline, this the last timeline y'all gonna give us, and you better adhere to it, or we're going to find another vendor. Now, what I still want to put on everybody's radar is the delay is the manufacturing, the supplying of these equipment that they have to send us. We can't control that. Y'all know that. Y'all probably didn't order furniture and everything else, and y'all got delays, right? So we all know there's a national delay. So I don't want that with this community, y'all trying to, well, they need to do something. Uh, excuse me, we've had a delay since COVID hit. Y'all are all aware of that. So that is where we're at with body cams. That external investigation, let me say this, I'mma give it, Kermit Williams called me today, former councilman, and he has requested that we have an outside entity look into that matter, this situation that happened with Ms. Wilson. I told him that I have put in the request, and I'm letting you all know, council, I have put in the request. I don't know which way that's gonna go, but y'all all know how I am, so I will keep y'all up to date on that. I am in support of getting another opinion, but we know the politics. Y'all all know our world. I ain't even about play no games. Y'all already know we up against, okay? Okay. So I'm cut and dry. Y'all know I'm directed, I'm a straight shooter. Number two, oh, I told y'all about the eligible tapes. Now, community members, it's a team called Sheriff Relations Team for you all. The Sheriff Relations Teams was put in place for community members to report to these individuals who all represent our community. They are either elected officials, pastors, businesses, community activists. We're all on this team. And actually, I'm the chair of it. Y'all, Commissioner running, and Pastor Jones is the vice chair. If, if you all have concerns, if, like Councilman Rutherford said, fearful of the police, if y'all don't feel comfortable talking to the sheriff, y'all supposed to find out who the hell on that SRT team, call them, let them know how you feel. And let me say this, too. We don't report who said what. We report anonymous. And I have certain, as a matter of fact, if you on the SRT team, can you raise your hand if you in here? Okay, that's just two, but we got- Okay, that's just two, but we got several people. I will provide that list and see if our website or something can post it, so that, with the city, so that you all are aware of that. Because when Sheriff Department took over our police, our, the Police Department, when they did, that was the issue. We know the history with the Sheriff Department and the City of Police, I mean, City of Pontiac. It ain't no secret. Y'all don't trust them. Y'all don't. Y'all really don't. But y'all have SRT community leaders, which is myself, and y'all can always call me, because half of y'all know me in here, and I am the one that advocate for you. And I reported a nominee, and we handle everything, from busting up a drug house to this thing going on over here. Uh, this person may be abusing their kids. Tell us. Yeah? And you know how y'all say y'all don't want to snitch? Well, I'm the snitch. I'm a happy snitch. Because you want to know what? In this community, we gonna live comfortably. Everybody is. And I'mma say this, too. Some of y'all know what's be going on. Open y'all mouth. Or you okay with living with that? Don't complain. Do not complain. Them days is over. And we have, we have community members here who care about this community. And we ain't gonna stop until everybody gets some hope and comfortability of living in this city without any issues, okay? Because stuff happens everywhere. But at the end of the day, we have to be the mouthpiece for our own peaceful sanity here. And if we don't, then shame on you. You okay with living with that? Now, what else? Um, oh, Michael, uh, me, I'm sorry. Sorry. Commissioner, I mean, Councilmen Goodman, I need to know that title of the board that you looking at or trying to, because again, the Sheriff's Department is governed by Oakland County. It is a contractual, and I want to look into that board. And I think what you leaning towards, Commissioner Cavell just asked me about something yesterday. So if that's what you talking about, I've already gave him the okay for me, because I'mma let y'all know this, too. Pontiac has a lot of stuff going on. And I'm a Commissioner that I can't do it myself. I can't. It's a lot. And guess what? I have Commissioners who step up to help me, to take initiatives, run with them, with the Commissioners, to see if we can get stuff for the city. So I thank them. So Cavell is on. We just talked in committee yesterday, and I want to let you know he's already working on that, if that's the board. Um, sorry, I wrote notes, because I wanted to make sure while I got the time. Oh, mental health services. Because again, this lady needed help. I don't care what nobody say. She needed help, and somewhere in the process, she was failed. And as a community, we got work to do. But what I want to tell y'all is, I'm gonna take a step further in list, because the county just recently devoted a blockage of millions to help with mental health services. And damn near 80% of them companies either are, their headquarters is here, or they're providing a mental health service here, okay? I'm gonna get that posted on our city website, so that you all know where these mental health agencies are, so that we can get our people some help. Because what y'all not doing, and what this community is not doing, is we not utilizing the resources. And I know that. And if you go on my Facebook page, on August 5th, I did a Q and A with these, with a handful of these mental health agencies, to elaborate on what services they have there so they can help our people. So, go to my page and just know that eventually it's gonna be on Oakland County page, and I'mma share the information with leadership, so we all know where these mental health services are and where, you know, we can send people when they ask us for help. Uh, Oakland 80, I want to let y'all know that it is a great program. Please, 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 spread the word, get some help. We know people want careers and jobs and stuff like that. Listen, y'all, I know we in a time where we got a lot of people who ain't trying to go to work, but eventually, just so y'all know, government only gonna help so much. And for the most part, we have a lot of resources and money out there for people to get back into the workforce, go find a career, help with entrepreneur, whatever the case may be. And guess what? Y'all just have to contact your elected officials to find out where are the resources. But ladies and gentlemen, Oakland County got, and especially Pontiac, we have a lot of resources here to assist us. But guess what? They are not being utilized by my city residents here in Pontiac. I only look at the quotes for Pontiac, I could give a dang on hoop for everything around us. Because I know we need help, because I just told y'all, I asked my Commissioners to help me. It's a lot going on with this city. And at the end of the day, collectively, we got to do some work, and I need y'all to go get these resources. Because guess what happened? When we don't use the resources, what happened, folks? They go back to the federal. They go back to the state. And why we do, why we doing that when we know everybody need help? And my last thing is, in closing, thank you. Sorry, yes, I came amped today to address my people, because it's a lot going on, and I'm a hard worker. They know where my heart is. The city know where my heart is. I just want to congratulate that young lady that came up here, Zoltar Ray, because it take a lot to represent and talk on gun violence as a African-American individual, and we all know that. And she has a national platform, and we, the Commissioners, gonna be recognizing her on September 1st. And I just want to thank Council and Mayor, Deputy Mayor, thank you for acknowledging her tonight, because we all know, we've all been there, we're activists, that when your work is recognized, it helps you just level to the next level to keep fighting. Thank you. Y'all have, well, I mean, do y'all got any questions for me? And if not, thank you.
Questions on our rules and procedure for elected officials' recognition. So it's your time to speak as.
Oh, well, thank you. Y'all know how to get in contact with me. Thank you for the floor.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good evening, folks.
Thank you. That was Oakland County Commissioner Angela Powell representing Pontiac. We are joined by Pontiac School Board President Gil Garrett. If you'd like the floor, sir.
Real quick, thank you, Council. I know we were on agenda to present, but there's an OSHA report that hasn't been completed yet, and as soon as that report gets complete around the bond project.
Order placed, the School Board President has the floor.
That was started between the President and Pro Tem. Once those bond projects, we're gonna reevaluate what we gonna, how we gonna actually reallocate the money for the bond projects. But we need to bring that back to your leadership, maybe in a subcommittee to have a discussion around what we're gonna do, i.e., partnership with the pool. So, I'll just kind of throw that out there. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other elected officials that wish to have the floor this evening? With that, that concludes recognition of elected officials. We are now at Agenda Address, an opportunity for residents to speak to items that are on this evening's agenda. It is not the only opportunity. Public comment will come a short while later as well. President Pro Tem Carrington, are there any requests for Agenda Address this evening?
Actually, we have no requests to speak at Agenda Address.
All right. We are now at, we have, we're looking at the public comment and the Agenda Address. There's two separate clipboards. Here's this evening's clipboard for Agenda Address. We are now at Resolutions. Councilman Parker?
And I did as well. I put Quincy Stewart's name on there.
Okay, it's on the, it's on the last page. My apology.
Thank you very, that was a collaborative solution to that problem. We apologize. We think the sheet probably got changed once the first one got filled up. So we have a full sheet. Pro Tem Carrington, Agenda Address.
Mr. Antonio Gibson Bishop.
I want to speak to this violence, the striking of the young lady on Montana. I am seriously, I'm part of the Sheriff's Relationship Team, too, and I believe to get rid of the no-snitch rule also. So you can contact me at two four eight, six three six six five nine four. And I got big shoulders, so I can carry my own weight. I do talk with the Sheriff's Department all the time, and the captain, their supervisors, and I've asked more than one time about the striking with your fists, or even batons, anything like that. Thank you, young man. Anything like that, because our residents are very afraid to even talk to some of the Sheriff. And my issue is, as the question was, how many hours do they have training for this? Because it's ridiculous how this young lady was treated, with a knee in the face, striking with a fist, and things of that nature. And so I'm asking that our community to keep calm until they do their review. We call it an investigation, until they do their review. And then we are able to articulate the right things to the Sheriff's Department and our captain over here that works dealing with this community. And I do thank Commissioner Powell for standing up and saying, let's get this done. But if we start doing what other communities do, and that's rally together and get out there and start tearing our city up, our city, we won't get the help that we need. And so, as leaders of this community, Council people, Commissioners, pastors, and i.e. residents of the City of Pontiac, we need to act like that we are human and do the right things until this review is done. And then, once the review is done, then we can make demands and what we won't change to help our city out. And then, the most important thing, if we know someone that have mental health issues, and the police have been called out in that area multiple times, someone should be there to tell them that when they get on the scene, and not after we have incident as we had the other day. Thank you for my time.
Oh, thank you, sir. And please forgive me, I didn't see the list that was at the bottom of the stack, so. Mr. Bill Maxey, what agenda item you want to address? All right, thank you. Is it Tamara Miles, or Tamara Miles? Says Cal Tally? Is it Rachel Dixon, or Dixon? Ms. Gloria Miller, what item, agenda item? I'm sorry? Yes, ma'am.
This is where I want to start at. First of all, let me say something. The Sheriff Relation Forum, I'm not gonna be like when I get through, but normally not, so I'm just gonna speak what I want to speak here. The Sheriff Relation Forum, I seen that forum was formed. None of the people in this room was on that forum. Not elected officials. I, I used to be a Councilperson. I don't need to be on there. You don't include the people out in the city that live in the streets that know what's going on in the street. Everybody in here know what goes on in Pontiac. We, we family. We been here for years. And I'm not gonna play politics. I didn't play it when I was up there, and I'm definitely not gonna play it on this side. First of all, you gotta walk the walk and talk the talk. If you don't live it, people don't respect you and listen to you. You gotta put people on those forums that people in the street can relate to. We need some young people like you, some, like other people, you. Somebody that knows what's going on in the street. Stop picking people that's going to stay political with this stuff. Because at the end of the day, I seen, I'll get you later, I seen, I seen where this lady was beaten. It hurt me, broke my heart. Now, with that being said, all these people that's walking around, the cops know us just like we know them. See, that's one thing about us, we gonna tell what happened. And all I'm seeing is that, if that had been my mother, I probably been in jail, too. I probably been in jail. Because you don't have to do that. It's the way you treat people. It's your compassion for the other person. Even though she had a mental problem, couldn't you constrain her in any other way? Because I'm telling you, that been my mother, I been in jail. Because you don't have to do that. That was a lady. Even though she got mental, and I'm not being funny, but we all got mental issues living in Pontiac, because we having such a hard time. So, I mean, you gotta treat us all with comfort, because we going through a lot in this city. We don't have anything. Our city looking terrible. We need, and I just got to say this, where's our mayor? Ask yourself that.
Thank you. Mr. Regina Campbell, you're on Agenda Address, what item? Oh, okay. All right, some of these names I can't.
Quincy Stewart should be on there.
No, no. No.
I signed you up for Agenda Address. Thank you.
Actually, Mrs. Quincy, Quincy is not on Agenda Address.
I requested that he be put on Agenda Address.
Okay, I didn't get that request.
You, you want me to show you the text?
To who?
To.
Order, there's, there's one.
Yeah. Mr. Jason Mitchell.
I just want to start off by, I'm terrified to be up here, but I can't be any more terrified than my mother-in-law. It really hurt me. I was sitting at home, I worked third shift, I get the footage of my mother-in-law getting beat. My first thing was to jump in the car. I left my wife, who is named after her mother, and got to Pontiac as fast as I could. I was out to go to jail. I, I put my phone, I put my keys in the car, I was going to jail. This is wrong. For me to stand up here means a lot, me, to me personally. Like I said, I'm terrified, but I just want to see these officers be held accountable. Really emotional about this situation. So, my video shows what it shows. They, they released their own dash cam video, which shows me a little more. At what point was she really biting the officers? Was it after she was being struck in the face? Because that's all I seen. I didn't have a clip of the other officer swinging, but their clip showed both of them. I just really want to thank everybody for the love and support from my family through this. And I, I hope justice is served properly, and I hope my mother-in-law receives the medical attention that she needs. I mean, I can't even communicate with her. We don't know what she's really going through in there. And I just, I just want to thank everybody for standing behind my family. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is it Darice Stevens and Kadicia Stevens? I'm assuming it's concerning.
My name is Darice Stevens. The subject, the way that they prefer to my mother, that's my mother. She's not a subject. My mother, she's had mental illness all of my life. And I still love her with all my heart. My heart is beating out of my chest because it's not the fact that she's my mother, and it's not the fact that she's black. It's the fact that she was a human being, and she was treated like that. And I understand that deputies, they, they came in to fix the situation, however, they, you know, thought that they were handling it or doing what was best for them or help to, to calm the situation down. I feel like what hurt me the most was the striking after she was down, face down in the dirt, after she was cuffed. You know, at that point, I think that it's over, right? You know, why are we still swinging? Why are we still kneeing her in the face? If there's a male, why are you still, you know, you're on her back? You know, why, after cuffing, why wasn't she just, you know, put in the car? You know, why are we still striking? I just don't understand. It really hurt. It really hurt. Hard to watch. It took me five tries to get through that video. Really hard to watch. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Kadija Stevens. I am Darice Wilson's second-born child. And my mother needed more than just reframing from how they did her. When they got that call, they had got calls prior to, to that address, to address her issues before. This is not the first time she has mooned the police at that same address that they're addressing, that, that was inappropriate behavior. A woman that has mental illnesses, not just mental illnesses, she has bipolar schizophrenic, which mean she was talking to herself amongst herself when they approached her and asked her, why are you lighting that on fire? She shooed them away in the video, as you can see, because she's having her own intervention. When they intervened and they scared her, they put her into defense mode, and I work at Mental Ill. they put her into defense mode, and I work at mental ill homes. I am a CNA, every night and day, I deal with that. Her biting them, I've been bit four times. And never have I pawed up my fist in the medical field and punched one of my clients, my individuals, I've been working in that field for seven years. I have never did that, and I've been bit four times. I'm CPI trained, and I just took the class this morning again to renew it. And there is nothing in there that says you paw your fist up to stop somebody from biting you when they're mentally ill. What you're supposed to do is pull the person towards you to release them from biting, or put your finger in the back of their jaw so they will open up. You do not forcefully hit somebody like that. My mother needed help, and they keep saying about the IT lady. The IT lady stood there, the whole video, as the community that was out there with my mother stood and told them that she has mental illnesses. They never once turned to somebody and said, "Okay, we're gonna do something about it." They're, they're handling, they're gonna handle it in a different way. Family members was out there, a lady that was standing in a blue outfit completely on the sidewalk by the police kept telling them, "She's been like this all her life." Y'all been to that house for so long, y'all been coming to that house. We had a man come there when she, when she had an other incident, and she mooned him and ran in the house. He said, "I'm not losing my job. I'm not going in after her. If she wants the help, she can come out and we can talk and get her the help." They didn't do that this time. Somebody probably was in the way. And then that video that the police put on the news, they chased her in a circle before getting her on the ground. So when did y'all stop to think, we all out here looking crazy? Ain't no normal person just finna run in a circle? And then, after that, family members calling, getting that video, seeing that video numerous of times, getting negative comments, it just broke us all down. At the end of the day, I'm standing up here and I'm being strong because that's my mama, and she don't have nobody to fight for her. That's what they thought, but we all here, and we not going nowhere. That don't make no sense. Everybody seen that video. People contacting me, I ain't heard from in years. Nobody should have to meet like that. We always meet during a tragedy. We don't never see each other on good terms. It's always something bad. Or somebody getting taken away from their family member, children getting shot and killed, my mother being stumped to the ground with her head and her face in the dirt like she a dog, and she shitted on herself, my, excuse my French. But that's what happened. That's how they treated her, like a dog. And it wasn't one cop that should be accountable for it, it's multiple of them. Because they all sat out there and allowed it. And I spoke with the police officer union, he took me upstairs in his office to act like he was concerned. Told me he would give me a call at the end of the day and be sure that my mother would be taken care of and checked on her mental health. He never called me back. He not a man of his word, and I don't respect him. Because if I say something, I'm gonna do it. At the end of the day, that was wrong. And then they sit up there and just don't give us no information at all. That lady need help. Anybody in the mental health field knows when a person has schizophrenic, they have people that speaks to them in different persons, they can be a child, they can be an adult, they can go through a spell where they don't even know who they are. They can tell you that they're somebody else. My mother, I knocked on her door one day, she told me I was an impersonator of her daughter. Do you know how bad that hurt? But I still stood there and tried to get her to recognize who I was. That's how you try, that's how you care. I got in the medical field because when I was younger, I didn't understand why she did some of the things she did. And I tried to understand it to the best of my ability. So I learned from dealing with those type of people, and they are individuals. They're not subjects, they're not dogs, they're not different from me and you because we are all imperfect. They're to be treated as such. You can help people and do right by them, it's just the way you do it. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Larry Jasper.
We talking on the same issue? Uh, what you saw there is incorrect, nobody should be beaten at any time. But that's why the community has to come together as a whole. I remember last week, we were talking about cameras on the police officers, and there's a supply demand, but why don't we have cameras in the parks? We're talking about all these different issues in the parks. You gotta do a policing where everybody's involved and you, and you're taking away the crime that's existing. A lot of those issues cause a lot of different things to happen. I don't think anything here was right, but why aren't we monitoring the parks when we got 200 people partying and breaking all laws? Why do people get scared and not talk to anybody? Because they're afraid that if they do say something, their, their house is gonna be broken into, their children are gonna be hurt, or some, something's gonna go on. You heard the commissioner, she has all kinds of different things to work with the sheriffs. We should do this, we should take this as a step and help all people, especially the mental ill. If we had these, these visuals going on, we talk about the police carrying cameras, but we don't want to put the cameras in the park. We don't want to put cameras on the streets where we're seeing crime happen all the time. You really have to figure out where you want to go on that, and you have to help the whole community as a whole. Because everyone will come together if it's done right for everybody for the same reason. In other words, treating fairly. And I, I'm sorry to hear the things that happened here, it's appalling. But, if you're not taking care of the rest of the stuff, this will continue to go on. You're gonna have incident after incident after incident. And all I'm saying is, let's figure out a way to bring the whole city together through the council with all the different aspects that we can protect not only the mentally ill, but the children as well. And actually set a precedent. That's all I have to say, thanks.
Uh, thank you, sir. That concludes our Agenda Address.
Alright, we're now at resolutions. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution calling for investigation of Nevada Street Incident involving the Sheriff Department?
So moved.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman. The motion is now before us. I believe Councilman Goodman has a, sort of a text amendment.
Yes, so to, to make it more accurate to the actual situation, I want to change the, uh, street from Nevada, both in the title and in the first, whereas to Montana, to more accurately reflect what took place.
Is there a second on that amendment?
A second.
It's been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Pro Tem Carrington, that we make the amendment of the text to strike Nevada in two places and replace it with Montana. Any discussion on that amendment? Councilwoman Rutherford.
Um, I just have a statement. Malcolm X once said, "The most disrespected person in America is a black woman." And when he said that, I didn't understand it until I saw what I saw. And it makes me call into question, how are we regarded as far as with the police department as a black woman? I'm afraid to get pulled up on the side of the road. I'm afraid they gonna run my plate. I'm saying it because if I'm afraid, I wonder how other people are. This investigation has to happen, and I don't care about Facebook, or social media, or slandering, or, or I care about getting to the source of the problem, which is how are we being governed in our community? We have to call truth to power, we have to call out Gil Gare, we have to call out others when they use their position to weaponize against the community. So this absolutely necessary must happen, this investigated, and I fully support this resolution, that's it.
The motion before us is amending the, uh, motion to strike Nevada and replace it with Montana. Is there any discussion about the amendment? Hearing no discussion on the motion to amend, roll call on the adoption of the amendment to the resolution, Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Seven yes, no nays.
That motion carries, which was just changing that one item in the resolution. So we're now at the main resolution as amended, so we're at full discussion and other amendments that may come before us. Councilman Goodman, you have the floor.
Unfortunately, uh, what took place on, uh, the other day is appalling. It is anger inducing, uh, however, it is not at all shocking. Um, as a black man who has lived in the society the 22 years that I've have, I've seen things. The many of you who are in that, in, in the audience who are older than I, have seen more things and much worse. And unfortunately, we're looking at the situation where we're having this conversation, and I think the, the fact that the resident who had, uh, mental illness should be treated appropriately. But I think we need to have a larger conversation that it doesn't just matter if they have mental illness. You should treat a person, no matter what, with respect and dignity, with the same level of care and policing that you do in suburban communities where these things do not happen as much. So the fact that, again, we've arrived at this day, uh, I am disgusted, I'm disgusted and angry, but I am not shocked in any way. And it, it just goes to, to, to show that we have a long way to go. Because oftentimes, in, in this community and in Oakland County, we hear the idea that those things don't happen here. They happen elsewhere. And as, as a person of color who has been doing political activism for years, who has lived in the city, who has had the police, uh, arrest my stepfather for having a legally obtained gun, uh, to which actually, the current mayor was the person who helped get my stepdad out of that case because they knew it was bullshit. Excuse my language. But that happened because of the, the skin tone of my father, where, my stepfather, where we lived at, and the right that he was upholding. And it, it just goes to show that, with, just within itself, there are a lot of things that are happening in, uh, our community and elsewhere that is not being done fairly, being done with actual justice in mind. And, we need to do better. We have to do better. Because I, 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 the thing I can say is that luckily in this situation, uh, and in the situation that we've had in Oakland County, at least to our, uh, what we're aware of, is that no one has been shot and killed. But it's really disgusting that I'm sitting here and having to say, luckily, that didn't happen. You know, she got beat, she has a black eye, but luckily, the worst thing didn't happen. And the fact that we're even having to have this conversation, i- is, is a problem within itself. So I am, uh, more than ready to pass this because I, I do believe that we, uh, as a community, as a city, uh, have to do more. Uh, it, it's not really a, a question of if we should do more, um, but the question is, why are you up here? Why are you doing the job if you don't want to do more? So I will leave it at that.
Other further discussion? Councilman Parker, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. We've had a robust discussion today about the incident that occurred. And we've heard from both sides as to how it came about. And certainly, we're all feeling that a lot of it should not have happened in the way that it happened, that there has to have been a better way. And so, one of the things that we've been talking about, and one of the things that I think we need to certainly give further discussion to and thought to, is to have a police oversight committee that oversees what's going on in this city. Because sometimes, those who are in charge of it don't look at all the things that are necessary to be able to correct problems. When the fox examines the fox, he's always gonna err toward the fox.
That's right, you better say it.
And so, I, I just think there's a better way to, I certainly know there was a better, I think there was a better way to handle this. And I've heard all the, the issues, I'm gonna be calling some Lieutenant Workman and certainly Brother Cabell to get some more information, but I think if we really look at this incident, and the, the real issue here is how many more happens that wasn't videoed. And so there needs, to me, there needs to be some type of oversight, separate and apart from the internal investigations that, that the police will do, that will bring us to closure and resolution that this does not happen again. Thank you.
Councilman Nicholson.
Uh, I, I, I feel a, a bit of deja vu because we were here a week ago talking about another incident that we had concerns with. And during that conversation, and we understood that the body cams weren't available, I brought up that when Adult Protective Services enters a home to remove someone who has, is suffering in a, in a crisis, or has reacted in a way that they need to be removed from the situation, someone is there with a camcorder. I don't, I, I, we know this. So, so if, if the concern is that we, that, that the department feels they're doing everything the way that it should be done, what is the problem with having someone available with a camcorder we had? We had, equip the cars. You know, I, they, they're, they're, why the cruisers, when the cruisers, they, to be specifically told to please point them in, in, in this direction? Of course, things move, but to me, I, I feel, um, I feel frustrated, I feel tired about it. Kadisha, you said something that really took my heart and turned it around in a way that my mother suffers from mental illness, and during different parts of my childhood, I, I, I didn't know how or where to be with any of it. And I work in the mental health field now, and every day I see similar situations happen, and every time, we have to call because someone can't be supported. I, dialing that number is scary because I don't know what the training is, how the training's done, I know what the training we have is. And I know that we can be there and be supportive, but if that social worker, I would like to know, did the social worker feel that the response was adequate? Did they, did the sheriff's department feel that the social workers' support at that day was adequate? And that conversation needs to happen between the two of them. And I, I would like to also say publicly that the Oakland County Jail and Common Ground, if they are engaged with a social worker, should be calling your family to tell you what is going on, how she is, what the welfare of her is. Because I can't imagine where you're at right now, and wondering, knowing what happened, and then having to sit at home and not be able to have contact with her, that, that tears me apart.
Councilman James.
Yeah, uh, I support our resolution. I don't think it goes, uh, as far as it could, but I think it's, it's certainly a first step to be able to say as a council, to agree as a council, we think this needs, uh, to be fully reviewed. Uh, I appreciate Esther Parker's comment that we need a Pontiac, uh, we need a review board outside of the police department to look, be able to look at these cases and really examine, uh, what's going on so that we can do a better job in our city. Uh, but the whole incident is very disturbing, the video, uh, I, I just can't tell you, you know, what it makes you feel to watch that, as a woman. As a woman.
That's it.
What it makes you feel. And, um, but what's striking to me is, I, I just don't understand that we knew this woman, they went, they went out with a mental health person, so they knew when they went out, that this was a woman who was having challenges, was in some kind of a state of, of crises, even though it may have been, uh, added to with drugs. It may have been drugs and emo, uh, mental health crises, but still, they knew it was a mental health situation. And, you know, when we look at it, if we have, if somebody has a medical emergency in this city, we have EMS, we have, uh, you know, we have the, uh, the police and fire work together, you have EMS, and people who have medical emergencies get taken care of. They get to the hospital. And, and, you know, even, even in your home, I've had a medical emergency. They came into my home, they were giving me blood pressure and checking this in my home. And I was taken care of. But, we don't have that for people who are having, who are having mental health emergencies. And so we have women, you know, who have enough problems to deal with just with dealing with themselves. We have people, and they are treated like they are all because we really don't have the processes in place we need to have. So, there, we have a lot of work to do as a council, as an administration. We've got a lot of work to do because we're the ones who approve the contracts with the various people, and we know that we do not have adequate help for mental health crises. We don't have it. And because of it, this woman has suffered, uh, just unbelievable, this family. And I'm gonna tell you, the whole city, the whole city is suffering and, and grieving over this. We have got to do something, and as a council, as a councilman, I personally- And as a council, as a councilman, I personally pledge to do everything in my power to make sure that something like this never happens again.
President Protam Carrington, you have the floor.
Thank you, President McGinnis. I just want to keep this short. My heart goes out to the family. I'm someone who has, also have mental health individuals in my family, and some of the council knows my situation when it comes to my family members. And it's tough, when you don't know what to do, when you have a member of your family that's dealing with mental health issues. I had a member of my family who just was in a situation in Genesee County, very similar to this situation. And the judge had mercy in that situation when they got in that courtroom, to get her into some treatment instead of sending her to prison for a long term. They had charged her with arson, and putting kids in danger. And that situation worked out, because the court actually listened to my mom make that plea. So again, I go out to the family, really hoping that they can get your mother some help, because definitely, that's what is needed. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Stevens.
Like everyone else in this chamber tonight, and hopefully those who are watching these proceedings, I do want to give my heartfelt sympathy to the family. But additionally, I want to thank the council for what I think is a very well-stated resolution, asking for a thorough investigation to ensure that the safety of everyone at the scene is resolved properly in the future. So, you know, whenever you have any type of policing situation, there is a possibility, an opportunity, that there will be some sort of physical altercation between that policing agency and the people who are being policed. And you want to make sure that everyone in that situation, both the policing agency and the people who are being policed, are treated fairly and appropriately. And I want to applaud the council for asking for an investigation to make sure that the policies that are being applied to our community are fair and are making it safe for everyone in that situation. So thank you for this.
Thank you to my colleagues for your advocacy and your insistence that this be dealt with as swiftly and as transparently as possible. Obviously, we had a great deal of deliberation and questions during the special presentation portion, which directly relates to the subject matter in the resolution. I do want to point out that individual members of the Oakland County Sheriff's Department are not invoked by name in this, in the text of this resolution, since that was invoked in this evening's deliberations. Is there any further discussion tonight on this resolution, the motion before us? Hearing no further discussion, there's, the motion before us is adopting the Pontiac City Council Resolution, calling for investigation of Montana Street Incident involving the Sheriff's Department. Roll call on adoption, Clerk Doyle. Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Absolutely, yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays. That motion carries, seven zero. Is there a motion to adopt the council resolution recognizing September 2022 as Sickle Cell Awareness Month in Pontiac?
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman. Councilman Goodman, thank you for drafting this resolution on behalf of the city council tonight. Want to give you the floor first, if you'd like to expound further.
Yeah, so, sickle cell disease is one of the most common blood diseases and traits amongst people of color, specifically, black people. And as we head into September being Sickle Cell Awareness Month, usually, I would to follow through with that. There have been people within my personal and extended circle who have either had the sickle cell trait or has the full disease in itself. As some of you may know, the mayor of Lathrop Village, Mikael Kelly Garrett, her son passed away, I want to say, earlier this year or last year?
At a very young age.
At an extremely young age, from sickle cell complications. And I think it's extremely important that we have this conversation and discussion in our community, as it directly affects many of us, and looking at this dais alone, there are five of us who directly could be affected by this, may have the trait, may not. But it's so common and so prevalent in our community, if we look at one of the numbers in here, whereas an individual with only one sickle cell gene has a sickle cell trait which occurs in one out of every thirteen African Americans, and one out of every hundred Latinos in the United States. Whereas individuals who have sickle cell have a fifty percent chance of passing the abnormal sickle cell gene to future offspring, and twenty-five percent of having future children with sickle cell disease of both parents have the trait. And it is a very, very difficult thing to live with, without the proper medical care and attention. Whereas individuals living with sickle cell disease encounters barriers to obtaining quality care, improving life quality, those barriers include limitations to geographic access to comprehensive care, effective treatments, as well as the high reliance on emergency care and on public health programs, which further exacerbates not having that access because of the different things that happen having sickle cell disease, which can lead to chronic damage of organs, including the kidneys, lungs, spleen, repeated infections, strokes, pulmonary embolism. It is a very, very, very debilitating thing. And it is, again, so common and so prevalent amongst black and brown communities, that as we head into this month, and representing a city that has the makeup that we do, I thought it'd be extremely important to not only pass a resolution, but pass one with some detail, for people to have the chance to educate themselves and to pass on this information. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion before us? Councilman Parker, you have the floor.
Just really quick, I have some family members who have sickle cell. And I know that the pain that the individual person suffers, but also, the pain and concern that the family themselves go through, as they watch their family member deal with those issues. And so, I applaud you, Councilman Goodman, for putting this before us, and I thank you for being as involved as you are in what you've done with this.
Any further discussion on the motion before us? With that speaker's list exhausted, roll call Clerk Doyle on adoption of the city council resolution recognizing September 2022 as Sickle Cell Awareness Month in Pontiac. Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays. That motion carries, the resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the notice of a proposed budget amendment for fiscal year 2022, 2023?
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Parker, it has been seconded by Councilman Rutherford, that motion is before us. It would increase the budget revenues in the amount of eighty thousand dollars to the general fund, in account 101-000-674-000, contribution from public, and seventy thousand to the general fund in account 101-000-674-000, contribution from the public, and appropriations in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars to account 101-228-702-000, salaries and wages, and thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars to account 101-228-818-000, other professional services, thirty thousand dollars to account 101-228-731-000, computer supplies, and seventy thousand dollars to account 101-733-818-000, other professional services. Administration, any background you'd like to give beyond the black and white of the numbers and the accounts?
Certainly. Thank you, Council President. We do have Sekar Bawa here. If you have any specific questions of us, he is a senior accountant with the city of Pontiac, so he would be the one to actually, you know, move all of the money as you see in the budget amendment. But really, this is just us formally programming the funds, which our grant department has been successful in procuring for. So eighty thousand dollars for technology, primarily, that's going to be the implementation of Office 365, and an additional seventy thousand dollars for technical assistance to help us in our code enforcement division with policies, procedures, workflows, and other things to make us more efficient at what we do. And again, if you had any specific questions about how this works, we do have a member of our finance staff here.
Thank you very much for being here this evening. Are there any questions? Any final thoughts you'd like to offer, sir?
Yeah, this amendment is necessary, according to the city charter, on budget ordinance and the state law. That's why we're proposing this.
Understood. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, it's the motion to approve the resolution to authorize the city clerk to publish the notice of a proposed budget amendment. It'll be back before us in two weeks, so that we'll give the community an opportunity to know about this financial movement and to weigh with their feedback before we make a final decision. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption, Clerk Doyle. Goodman.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Carrington.
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays. That motion carries, the resolution adopted. The clerk is hereby now authorized to proceed, and we will consider this matter once the appropriate statutory opportunity for posting has been fulfilled. We move now to public comment. I want to flag for the community's benefit that the city council has opted to move discussions after public comment, in part to allow more thorough discussion by city council, but also to give adequate time for community members to weigh in with public comment as well. Protam Carrington, you have the floor, to help us recognize public comment.
Yes, Adriana and Laura from Oak Street Health.
Good evening. I want to thank the council, the absence of the mayor, the deputy mayor, and all the distinguished council people, and particularly Melanie Rutherford, I, District One. My name is Charles Renfro. I am part of the Crestwood-Asterwood Block Club, Vice President. We have the treasurer, and also the president there. And I just want to discuss what happened to my neighbor on the fifteenth of August, with the police raid over there. I was an eyewitness to, from the beginning and when they left. It was to me, and I need this question answered, and I heard the officer last week say that they knew that it was kids in the house. I heard him say it. I don't know who else they thought was in that house, but when I seen the parade of police cars, it was about eight of them, being led by a marked SUV police car, followed by seven other unmarked patrol car. And my picture went, I couldn't believe it, I had to call my wife in to say, "Look, look what's going on." And I didn't realize they were raiding my neighbor's house, good neighbor. So they came up, the last three cars, it was single, but the other two, they were double people in there, and they came out with a machine gun, I seen ATF vest on one of them. Also, they had machine guns, and evidently, in one of the front cars, they had battering ramps. So they went up to the house, they knocked a very short period of time, and it was the two young kids. I called to the police to tell them it was only two kids in the house. And the guy, he nodded to me like he acknowledged that. So I need to find out, did they know that the parent had just left? Did they know it was only two kids in there? Because to me, the only words I could come up with, overkill, traumatizing not only the kids but the neighborhood. They got up to the house, a short period of time, they knocked, identified themselves, and they rammed the door open. They didn't have to go in to search for the kids, I understand that the kids were already at the door. I seen them come out immediately after they bust in. And my understanding is, the kids said that, "Don't shoot, don't shoot." And so, they escorted them out. I think I heard one of the citizens last week say that they put them in the patrol car, but they did not put those kids in a patrol car. They ushered them out into the yard, and they began to search. And as I called the neighbor, we're that close, I called the neighbor, and she said she already had received a call from, inside the house from her son. So she was on the way back, she had just left, probably within twenty minutes. And she told me that she seen the police car tagging her. So I don't know if the car waited until she left, and then came and raided the place. She said she would have opened the door for them if they had waited for her. I'm pretty sure they probably investigated the intelligence there, I hope they had that. But I'm here to give my eyewitness to the fact, it was overkill. And they disrespected her, as she came home, they blocked my, I got video, they blocked my driveway, and my neighbor on the left, they dropped, they blocked her driveway as well, but they left her driveway open, the one house that they raided. So she pulled up after she got the call, and she had some words to one of the officer, and it was loud words. I didn't get all the verbiage, but it was attitudes going on. And she said, I remember her saying, "Well, just go ahead and do it." So I talked to her, and they had took her car keys, her work car keys, and they didn't realize that, well, they did realize she was there, because they knew who she was. So I would like for you, the council member, and I got a really good feeling about the council sitting right there, y'all gonna be proactive. I know y'all gonna get behind this here, y'all need to find out, for me, even for my wife's sake and the neighborhood's sake, did they know that it was only kids in that house? Or did they suspect somebody else? Because I understood, or I understand that the person that they were looking for was already apprehended. They were looking for a weapon. And I understand that they found a registered weapon in the house, but it was registered. So I need some information on that. And my heart really goes out to that family that was up here about the lady. And I was, I just took a few notes, and the police said that she, police, she fell on the police arm, and he bit her, right? So I'm saying, all that training they got, they ought to know how to arrest somebody without being bit. They need that kind of training. It don't make sense. And I appreciate you, Commissioner Nicholson, and you, Commissioner Goodman, your comments about the mouth and being apprehended and the feet, I really appreciate that. And I hope you guys really mean a business when you're talking about oversight of the police. One of my good friends, he was a policeman here in the city of Pontiac, he didn't transition already, but they had a really strong community connection. And I'm mentioning his name, his name was Raymond Sane, I don't know if anybody remembers him. Then we had, we had other policemen like Gravy and Thompson. They had a black community center over there on Auburn Street, but they had a, they had a real close community involvement. And with this here Oakland County policing, I don't think we have that connection. Even like he said today, I heard him say, that if they got rid of these officers, they got to bring somebody else in that not familiar with our community. And I was wondering how many of those officers that was on that call was really, really connected to our community. And one of the other officers, and I'm gonna sit down now, but he said he couldn't understand, never could he understand black people. That police officer, he couldn't understand black people. And I was taught, when I was a kid, that you always put yourself in another person's shoes. You can better understand. And he said he never could. Did y'all hear that? So I hope you guys do something, and I hope you governize that council board, and I hope you find out that answer for me. Did they know it was only kids in that house? Thank you very much.
Mr. Quincy Stewart.
Thank you. The incident on Nevada Street with Ms. Wilson is visibly egregious. Unlike most, I do not ascribe to premeditated maliciousness by the officers. The video clearly shows them initially calm. So what, what happened? Did something click, and it immediately became uber violent? How did it escalate so fast? The same way that the police breached a door on our street last week after three quick knocks, which no person could possibly answer before breaking the door down with two children alone inside. The same reason that Philando Castile was shot reaching for a wallet. Same reason Breonna Taylor and little Arianna Jones were shot dead in their homes, or Eric Garner was needlessly choked to death on an illegal cigarette sale. The propensity to act too quickly and aggressively with regard to black folk stems from long-held subconscious notions that many police have and may not even realize. The average cop who classifies themselves as white will tell you that they harbor no racist beliefs that interfere with their job. Yet, we see case after case after nauseating case, where unarmed black folk are brutalized in the fashion we witnessed on Montana Street by mostly officers who classify them- in the fashion we witnessed on Montana Street by mostly officers who classify themselves as white. Being bitten is not fun. I get it. But had more care, more time, and patience been employed as they might if a mentally ill white woman dressed better and more camp than Ms. Wilson in Birmingham, might be treated. And had they not bum rushed her, they wouldn't have been bitten. The disparity is how whites and blacks are treated by law enforcement, the judicial system, and other areas are very obvious. The issue is too big to just blame police. It's systemic. I suggest a courageous, honest conversation between the community, the Oakland County Sheriff's Department, state police, take place minus the insult, attack, name-calling, and the bad feelings that usually occurs, and have factual, solution-oriented dialogue. This is bigger than just police. The state has abandoned the mentally ill. Lastly, we can picket march, make speeches over megaphones to crowds, or we can have some hard conversations, not monologues, on either side, get some agreements on procedure, rules of engagement on paper with some signatures, and safeguards in place that hold people totally accountable on both sides instead of undersheriffs, so-called internal investigations, self-exonerating their own, giving them license to go ahead and continue to accost, maim, humiliate, beat, and even kill us at will. As a footnote, according to the mom on Crestwood, the ring doorbell that was there was dis- was turned off and dismantled before the cops ever came in there. With regard to body cams and simply, again, and simply chain issues, they don't seem to have any supply issues or supply chain issues with guns, ammo, mace, Humvees, AR-15s. No supply issues, no supply chain issues there. Thank you.
Because it's America.
Mr. Duro, folks.
Good evening, everyone. Starting with the incident on our street, I'm gonna give you a little scenario. What if there was a 14, 15-year-old boy in that house? He was upstairs or downstairs playing his video game, and he heard his little sister crying that somebody was breaking in their house. And he knew there was a gun in the house, and he bent the corner holding that gun. How would that story have ended? We'd have a totally different story, a cop shooting and everything else. Going on to the situation on Montana, how many deputies were actually on the scene, how many cars were on the scene? If they do not have body cams, how do they know exactly what was said by who and how it was said? It's their word against the accused's word. Years ago, Governor Engler closed all the mental health care facilities, buildings, which dumped a whole lot of people in downtown Pontiac that ended up at the Riker Building. They are building more prisons than they are mental health care facilities because they are privately owned and making somebody money. If they can find some way to make somebody money, you will see mental health care facilities on every other block. This is an age when the people that were born just at the end of the, during World War II and at the end of World War II known as the baby boomer. These people are getting older, and they are starting to suffer from dementia. And that was another problem. As a firefighter, we had people that we ran on all the time, and we would call them our Franklin Friars. So when we got that call, we knew who we was gonna deal with and how to deal with them and everything else, just like the young girl said. It was enough people in that neighborhood, somebody could have spoke up, or the cops could have said, "Does anybody know who this lady is?" With her being a Franklin Friar, because they've been to her house before, that should have been a red, it should have been flagged on their computer that this person has this problem, and they know what they was gonna deal with. Speaking of what Melanie said, fear retaliation keeps a lot of people from speaking up and doing what needs to be done in this city. They don't want to have the sheriffs or anybody following them and trailing them and everything else. Sheriff Bouchard put out a statement years, last year, whenever, about the incident in Minnesota. And he said, "Watching the situation unfolding in Minnesota, I must express my sadness, anger, and disbelief regarding the offense which have transpired over the last few days," talking about the George Floyd killing. "We have witnessed the images of horrific videos surrounding the death of George Floyd and the rioting and looting, which has occurred after the tragic death." Had this incident on Montana turned out differently, that would have been Sheriff Bouchard's George Floyd incident, and we would have seen how they handled that. And the last I want to say, more block clubs, more block cubs, and everybody needs to come together. Thank you.
Mr. Robert Bass.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Bass, President of Community Citizen District Council, located in District One. I've heard more than enough regarding the beatings. I've seen enough. As far as mental illness, I've worked with it and dealt with it all my life. The same as with what the comments that were made here tonight by the police and others. And still, to this day, one question that I did not hear asked, nor did I hear any mention of, where does the humanistic part come in? When you start punching somebody, what happened at your house that caused you to start beating on that person that you have bound? You're, I watched three cops beat this guy the other day. Those men were way more than I do and was taller than me. Same way with the one that beat the woman. They weighed more than I do and was taller than me. So you saying that two or three people cannot subdue anybody without beating them half to death before you pick them up? That's, that's what I did not hear. It's what does it take to subdue a person to where you don't have to hit them? If they're, if they're held back, the only thing they can do is move their head or their body. So because they do that, that's, I guess that's grounds for them to continue to start beating you. One last thing regarding this is that, at my age, when am I going to be a grown man? When is somebody my age going to be a grown woman? To where we're treated with the respect that we deserve as being adults? If you ask me where I'm going, I've got to tell you where I'm going. I'm a grown man. I don't feel like I tell you nothing. But I damn sure ain't gonna tell you the truth if I been to the bar or been to the dopehouse. That's, that's senseless to me. So I just ask that question, when are we going to be grown individuals? But what I came here for this evening is I do have a situation going in my district with a garage. I don't want to say a garage, because it's not really a garage. To me, it's a pole barn. However, 404 Highland Street, and I'm sorry, I didn't put my name or my organization on the paperwork that I left y'all, and I'm so sorry I didn't do that. But at any rate, I did things in a hurry, and I had sent an email to each one of you beforehand, hoping that you would get that email, and that would serve as the backdrop. Because how that, what you have in your hand is an inspection report that I received when we first started dealing with this in 2020. Well, 2020, I'm gonna just use 2020. That's inspection report. However, this building has been under a cease and desist order for about two to three years now. And this building is still causing us problems with dumping tall grass. And I guess now, as of today, you can say usage. Because in the report that you have, it says if a building or something is under a cease and desist order, you can't use it, and you can't store nothing in it. I came down this morning, yesterday morning, and I went to the building and safety, I mean, planning, and told them, asked them why were they using that building? So I was told that now it's a house. A single, single-family dwelling. Because that's what our, that's what our district is. You're gonna only have single-family dwellings in our, our one district. So when they built it, I don't know who approved the plans, but they were given a permit to build. But that violated their own plans. As you, when you read it, you'll see. But the owner didn't care that he was violating the plans that he submitted. He continued to build anyway.
That does conclude your time. The calendar, the clock went way extensive. I'm sorry that that courtesy was insufficient. Order. Next on the speaker's list.
Mr. Antonio Gibson Bishop.
He's gone.
He's gone. Mr. Jason Mitchell. Mr. Renee Beckley.
I hope everything for the families that were attacked by the police work out. But I have to get you on this council because y'all did this millage. Did you recently, council, hire a person to seek grants for the city of Pontiac? I believe the answer will be yes. I saw confirmation and approval for this person. Why not also hire a professional fundraiser? This council proves its lack of knowledge how to solve a financial problem. The only solution that they have was to text the Pontiac taxpayer with a millage. And I read that millage, that's a village on top of a millage. You see, and also with the tax money, with the, y'all have control with the police. So you know, our taxes go to the police too. So y'all gonna want us to fold in some more tax money to give to the police, beat up the people? Ask yourself that. Do you think that the Sam Walton family, the Ford family, or Oprah Winfrey, or other people with money and who not missed their money live here in Pontiac? Do you actually think that, that we have extra money just to give around to taxpayers? Oakland County just had a millage. For the, for the bus, the school board just passed the millage. Well, the Oakland County millage is coming. It's gonna be on the November ballot. It's for the bus. So there's a millage, you have a millage, and the school board. So that's three villages. We can't, we can't be spending this money like that. And I knew this combination with Michael and William on the council. I was like, they came from the school board. All they did was villages. Every, every time. I mean, and I still, that 147 million, I, where, where, what happened with that? Say, "No way, baby. No way, baby. No way, baby. I'm voting for it." And my neighbors are not either. I heard a lot of bragging and boasting on how great this council is by its own members. You pack yourself on your bed, you build up your resumes. But you only been here eight months, and you already did a millage. Eight months you been on that council, and you, and you have no solutions, and you already gonna give a millage? By far, this is the weakest council I ever seen. You already putting the millage on the November ballot, or seven, you have no clue of what to do. Is this what it's gonna be for the next four years, a millage? I just paid my tax bill, and I had to budget my payments due to my other obligations. Now hear this, no one has money for y'all. Now, Ms. Melanie Rutherford, last week, you said some strong things. You can file the police report you can. Remember, there's the First Amendment, and that is the, that has the freedom of speech. We can say what we want to, lest we're not threatened, unless it's true. Now, you gotta look up slander because you don't know the definition of it. Learning, and I will get back with you. I, I will not praise this council, say good job, or happy day, or yesome, like you vote on everything. When your performance lacks compassion for the people and for the residents in Pontiac, don't vote for this millage. Your apartment dwellers, don't vote for this millage, because where did this landlord get the money? Because he's the one that got paid taxes on your complex, right? Your rent gonna go like this. You know, we barely making it now. Pontiac, it was a poor city. We don't need villages. We get hit with three. And you gonna do a millage? Eight months on the job! My God.
Thank you. We just, we've been a little lenient on our time. Would we please ask everyone to stay within the timeframe? We don't want to cut anybody off. I know tonight has been a very passionate night, so we have extended grace to everyone.
I consistently extend time for council members. Order. Order.
Order.
Pro tem Carrington has the floor. Order.
Hey!
Order. Order in the chambers! There's our 61,000 people that are relying on all of us to be our best possible selves. The item on the agenda is public comment, the people's opportunity. Pro tem Carrington, please continue with acknowledging people's right to have their constitutional public comment.
I need to take a moment of pause. Don't start. Let me take a deep breath and understand what I just saw. Good evening, Mrs., Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac, citizens at large and governance. I sit here tonight listening to civil rights activists, fellow blazers, all community people who I've known for years. Like I heard Mr. Stewart, I heard Mr. Folks, and Mr. Renfro, I did not know. But with my understanding, and as a trailblazer in this community, working with these gentlemen over 40 years, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to understand. Also, for the first time and not many times, I've said this, I appreciate the council remarks. We have hard conversations. We need hard conversations. Number one, I could name three at this time. I'm concerned about the body cameras. I'm concerned about the knock on the door. But what you all missed, the lady went to jail in a police car. If CIT was present, she was supposed to be where? In EMS. Understand that. I have the picture with the fist in the air. Thirty minutes after it happened, my associate, Ken Anderson, sent me this. Lot wrong with that picture. We have to come together. What has happened now goes back to the time, the last time I was chair of the police trial board. We won, and the city had to pay out over $250,000 the cost of misuse and abuse. I know because I was the chairperson. And then the mayor said, "Well, we don't need you any longer." No problem. To get information together, let me be specifically clear about this. You talk about community relations with Bouchard. The Folks, the Andersons, the Maxes, the Basses, the Moores. Over 150 years of experience, and then you hear from this podium about someone you don't know? We've been trailblazers for years. How did that commit it? No, we don't need communication. The office need communication. No way in the world, and I'm not bragging, that you sit around, "We got 150 years of experience, and not one of us is on this Bouchard." and not one of us is on this Bouchard, whatever committee? Am I supposed to sit back and let a 42-year-old listen and tell me how to get involved? Do you understand who these people are sitting there? Not a one of us. And I'm just saying, it's on that committee. Where it come from, I imagine, I went to your church or something. It's no way in heck, hell, hell, can you have a committee without these trailblazers and experience?
That does conclude-
And I'm really upset about that because each time I come to a podium, it's about what we do, I might say with exception one time, what we do as a community. But the senior citizens will stand proud. And I think they better revisit that Bouchard, whatever community relations it is not. If you don't include the councilperson Joan, she's not my councilwoman. Someone over 50, the rest of us who've made history in the city, and you're gonna leave us out?
That does conclude your time.
Yeah, well, thank you for that, but you're not over 55 either. So I take that because you chair. But otherwise than that, I won't disrespect you. But wake up, Mr. and Mrs. Pontiac! Y'all's a dog in the barnyard! Ms. Regina Campbell. Ms. Katrina Moore. Ms. Katrina Moore. Is it Ms. Miki Alveson? Mr. Larry Jasper.
Thanks, Mike. Just a minute ago, we heard from the citizens talking about three different villages. Yet, that's not the best of it. Because the Hadley amendment that was issued by the state was to guarantee the citizens that they didn't have a higher price hike on their value of their homes so they didn't pay additional taxes during a surge. And that's what we saw. And if you've ever been in a city trying to reduce your taxes, that's almost impossible. They'll raise them as fast as they can blink an eye, but they won't reduce them. She's right, those villages are too far.
Point of order, seems like we might have an issue.
Yes.
So, Council President, there's, there's a technical issue with the video.
Mr. Jasper, you still have the floor.
You still have the floor.
Yeah, but there's no visual, and I need to go through this here.
We're the City Council of Pontiac, we gotta-
We gotta continue the meeting, sir.
Well, that's fun. By the way, that's pretty standard practice here. I don't know how many times I've been on the podium where the video's gone out or the voice doesn't work. And, and that's sad because that's one of the reasons I'm bringing up this. This is your partner in the GSA. And I just wanted to point out, and I don't think everyone saw this, they got $7.7 million upfront or at closing prior to the GSA. $7.7 million. Our mayor says that we're running a surplus of $6.2 million. How come you can't cut the grass? How come you can't take care of the properties? How come you can't clean up the city? $6.2 million reserve. Oh, I'm sorry, there's also a point in here that this proposal, you can't see. That's why I had to write it in black. Why can't you see it? Well, we know that. The forensic audit said the mayor, ex-mayor, didn't follow contracts or do contracts properly. Why is that? Because obviously, there was more money being lost. So you found a forensic audit on a limited edition of $1.6 million. I'm showing you 7.7 here. You don't have any rights for the Phoenix Center. See, it's written right in there. And then they want the, the landfill. They have the transfer rights, all the, all the legal rights of the property and the parking structure because that's a law where they protect politicians and city workers from being prosecuted. And then you got the city must list the UDM grant incentives. Oh my gosh, we're, we worked on grants first, didn't we? Who do you think that's gonna benefit? Really gonna benefit the city or the private investors? It's not gonna benefit the citizens, I guarantee you. That's why they have to actually do something. You talk about taxing? You got 400 condos sitting on Bloomfield Village is not gonna pay a dime for 35 years. Brand new. Who's gonna benefit from that? Certainly isn't gonna be the citizens of Pontiac. Certainly isn't gonna be the, the city and its new tax base. Then we have approval of Brownfields and incentives and Ottawa Towers, 28 North, and Lakeside Property. The writing was so horrible, you couldn't see it. This was put through the council, this was put through the city, and everyone just seems to turn a blind eye to it. It's millions. And that GSA can be reneged with nothing more than a vote from a resolution of the city council. That means you get the towers back and the parking structure, all your rights, and a total of $30 million plus. You got $62 million sitting in here with the Biden dollars and with MDOT. I'm approved of the Megalip transit system, that's commodities discounts to the citizens. Why don't we do something right? Why don't you actually take an effort instead of millinging everybody in the city? Cause I guarantee you, next year, they're gonna be evicted. Cause they can't afford $300 to $500 more per month. And half your citizens are gonna be trying to find a new place because the law will allow them to kick down the door. That's what evictions happen. I've been there. I've been through all of the stuff that I've heard, heard this here in, in this city hall. And I'll leave it at that until next week.
Uh, thank you. Ms. Gloria Miller.
Okay, I'm gonna get Benji's out the way first. Councilman Carrington, you left yes, last week. So I wanna, I'm gonna keep asking you about the $10,000 for the Panthers. And then give me an answer on that. Because after a while, I'm gonna have to start doing some investigating, see what's going on. Cause those kids are currently playing, and I intended for them to have the money by now. So if you can address that, I may be here and I may not, but I'll watch it at home later or catch it another day. Uh, Councilman Parker, what did you do about Coon Street? Those houses are butt. Maybe you can say publicly what your plans on doing it. Because that water and the rain that's going up into the house, it is a nightmare waiting to happen. Now, I'm, I'm gonna be a little short tonight. You know, I said, I said what I said because I remember when I was on council, we had issues like this too. And, uh, unfortunately, Mr. Michael is not here. Councilman Goodman is not here because I went, and I won't name names, and I asked about a review board. And I was told that no one is gonna run this city but me. That means Oakland County. So if you guys can get that done, it'd be interesting. Cause they told me it wasn't gonna happen. And that's why I said that review board. The review board is not, is only good as the people in the community, not elected officials. That's what I mean. Ministers and pastors, they're good for their, their cause and all that. But we gotta get to the people in the community. Cause we are the one that run the city. We know what's going on in this city. And so you have to put everyday Joe Blow people on these, on these, you know, I'm sure everybody see what I see. You see the same old faces, it's the same old names on everything, all committees. I read the newspaper every time I turn around. It's the same old names, I won't even name them. And it's like, and, and, and it's like, okay, what's going on here? It's all politics. So, one of the offices has said something. I want the community out there to hear me that's listening to my voice. He's, I wanted the office to just say that that's good that the council did a resolution. But at the end of the day, I want the citizens to understand, I was on the council. It is up to the mayor, this council, to let those cops go if they need be. At the end of the, of review, it's probably gonna be reviewed. They're gonna be okay. They're gonna be let back out in society. You and I both know that they probably can't be out here anymore because it's too much hostility. They need to be probably placed somewhere else now. It's too much. It was too much. It's too much hostility out there with that. So for the, for the, for the community, we need to get that. So I'm saying to all of you out there, your elected officials and Mr. Tim Grimaud, which is in his absence in council, you should have stated where he's at because we never did that on the council. You have to stay where the mayor is. He is the CEO of the city. Cause your city is only good as your leader. And your leader gotta be here to lead because right now, the community needs a leader right now. I applaud you guys for being up there, but we are missing the head right there. Because this is an urgent matter in the city, and this could go bad. And I don't want it to, because I don't want people to think this because we got some good cops in this city. But we got some bad ones too. And we gotta, and someone said, well, what do we do? We get rid of them. I said, if they send some more in, they say they're coming from other places, we get rid of them. They do bad, we get rid of them. We keep going till we get somebody to care about us. That's how we do this here. That's all I wanted to say.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Chuck Johnson. Andrea Mans.
Good evening. Hello, everybody. Uh, uh, back in April, I brought up the same property that Robert Bass was talking about. 40567 Highland, somewhere around in there because it's five lots. And they put a pole barn there. And like he said, they've now said it's classified as a house, but it doesn't have a door. It has garage doors. So I don't know how it's a house when the foundation is built on, is built on a barn. And I'm, 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 I'm under the impression that a house has to be, the foundation has to be so many feet underground, or the barn has to be, or garage. All of those have different specs or whatever. But yeah, it, it has two giant garage doors and some windows around it. I don't see an entry door. And it's like a 3,100 square feet, one-bedroom house it's supposed to be. But anyway. One suggestion I, I had like about the, uh, the police. When, when we had Pontiac police, my understanding was that most of them had their finger on the pulse of the neighborhoods. Everybody knew the cops, the cops knew them and all of that stuff. And I was wondering, is there any way to try to integrate them back in or do something with that? Because I think they were dismissed when the emergency manager came in or something. But maybe that's a way to get somebody more familiar with the people in the neighborhood. Or maybe take the, the deputies and divide them into the four corners, like the south, the north, the east, the west, and have them be familiar with the people that they're working with so that they would know them when they're sent on a call and it wouldn't be so much hostility that they would know their people. And, you know, maybe that'd be a better way to work it out instead of, um, just calling different people over there that don't understand what's going on in that neighborhood. They don't know these people. And, you know, they react in a certain way. So maybe that's something that could be brought into, mm, problem solving to help them to understand the people that they're working with. And maybe build a rapport with them so that, um, you know, they're care more about the people that they're working with and won't be angry when something like this happens.
Uh, thank you. That concludes our public comment.
With that, there was a name that was similar to that on an agenda address earlier this evening, but it's very illegible. Is that individual still with us? Yes, without objection, please take the floor. We give you the floor.
We give you the floor. Yes, that name was, we couldn't even read that name. So just wanna, I did ask that we had, we had a name on it that I couldn't read.
But thank you for verbalizing that. You have the floor.
All right. My name is Levante Travis. I'm with Pontiac Drywall Systems. Uh, we've been downtown Pontiac for, uh, since 1999. Started off doing work for HUD, uh, multiple, uh, homes that we built around here. Uh, we also done, um, the drywall in MGM Grand Casino. And now we're doing projects for the United States Navy over in Annapolis. Also, uh, West Point and, uh, over in Newport. Museums for the United States Navy, multi-million dollar projects. Uh, with that being said, we've, uh, came back and started bidding work around here. A more recent project that we bid was the senior citizens improvement for the, uh, just recently in the last month. Over that timeframe, with me bidding multiple federal works, I know the process that we usually get notified whether with a bid award or they have debriefing, they give you some type of notification uh, when federal dollars are involved in any type of construction project. We've bid two projects in the last month. The notification process that we have, um, seen from the city of Pontiac is not what I'm familiar with. We're doing multi-million dollar projects for the Navy, the FBI, uh, Army Corps, or whatever various branches that you may, uh, wanna bring up. Uh, so one thing, uh, we know for a fact was that we were low bid on that senior citizen, uh, improvement project. So we wanna know how these notifications are gonna be being brought up. And we also wanna know what's the timeframe for these debriefing. They usually give you that type of, uh, I don't know if there's some type of fire clause or any type of ci, uh, city level, legislation that oversees these, uh, bids and debriefings. So it's kinda what we wanted to bring up. Cause, uh, I don't think that, uh, the process that's, uh, is kinda being fairly brought, uh, brought up to bidders on an equal basis from our experience with the last two projects from what I've been seeing across the board on a multi-million dollar federal level.
And then, just real quick, I think I talked with you yesterday, sir, Deputy-
Could you, uh, please give me your name for the record, sir? Len Travis, with PDSI. And what's your name, sir?
Levante Travis.
Okay. I'm the president of the PDSI. And, uh, as my son said, we've been here over 20 years. I graduated from Pontiac North. But to go quickly though, I did talk with the deputy mayor yesterday in regards to this project. Uh, we know for a fact that we were definitely the lowest bidder on the project. We followed all of the proper protocol and procedures, but I don't feel like that, that, that same thing has been reciprocated. Because as, as my son indicated, uh, there is policies and procedures that are in place. We didn't get any debriefing, we didn't get any notification. And then it's been brought to our attention that we weren't selected, although we are a Pontiac-based company. We do have experience. We've done projects 10 times the size of this project. And we, we've been informed that although we're low bidder and Pontiac-based, that we're not gonna be awarded the project. So I hope that the council, when it does come before you guys, will look into this in depth. Look at the history of our company. See that we have more than the capability to bond the project. We've done projects, again, I emphasize the fact, 10 times the size of this project. And, and I'm very curious on how come we're not gonna be awarded this project. Thank you for your time.
Uh, thank you. Uh, President McGinn, that concludes our public comment.
We are now at discussions. They'll be as brief or as lengthy as council members pursue them. The first is the spotted lanternfly invasive species that's been seen in Pontiac. We shared this with you last week. We wanna reiterate the same. The first sighting of this invasive species in all of Michigan was detected in Pontiac. I have learned further that it was in the vicinity of Martin Luther King and Featherstone Road. So that's a very unpleasant historic, uh, aspect of District 7. But, um, we just wanna keep the community aware of this because it needs to be very swiftly remediated. If you see anything, please contact the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. Uh, it's a very distinctive fly. It has a very distinctive nest, uh, sometimes on vehicles or on properties or on trees. Um, and so we just wanna remind you of that conversation from last week. And have any other discussion? Councilman Goodman? Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we move on. The Great Lakes Water Authority, um, this was a request that goes out to 23 communities and Pontiac was invoked as well. So as we remember, um, there was, uh, a weekend before last, the thought that there was a boil water advisory that was swiftly resolved and Pontiac is not included. But it was prompted by a compromised, uh, water main pipe for the Great Lakes Water Authority, which is the current name for essentially the Detroit Water System. They are requesting, as they're working to finish that, that many communities in the affected area limit your outdoor watering. And Pontiac was included as that as well, so I wanted to amplify that. So that way, um, as much as possible, if you could, limit outdoor watering. That's the request from, uh, the Great Lakes Water Authority. Councilwoman James, you have the floor.
Are they being specific? Are they saying that we, we should not turn on sprinklers or limit the number of days? Are, are they being specific about it or just asking people to use their own judgment?
Deputy Mayor, did you wanna weigh in? Oh, I saw that lean, I thought that was a knowing lean. The article in the Ocon Press that I reviewed did not explicitly say that they're mandating it. There are some communities in the affected area, including Troy, that have instituted bans on sprinkler systems in their city prompted by this. So some communities are trying to take it to that point. They just- Uh, they just said limit or, or not use outdoor watering. So by that, they do mean sprinkler systems. So they're essentially trying to keep their system going and, and impact the pressure issues. Because every few days, they, they remove a number of communities from the boil water advisory. But it sounds like it might be a matter of multiple months before they even fix this main issue.
Okay.
Um, so I thought, you know, at the very least, we could put it on Pontiac's radar. If you're able to limit it, limit it. And, but I have no intention for us to try and bring up a ban or anything like that to, you know, mandate that we cannot. Any other discussion? Councilman Goodman?
Now, I will say, good watering practices when it comes to lawns is early in the morning and during the evening. So if you're gonna water your lawn, do not do it during the middle hottest part of the day. Please follow what is considered normal watering. Uh, and I think that that's where I'll leave that one.
Any further discussion on that, uh, limiting of outdoor watering request that we've received? With that, um, Oakland County Public Transportation Millage Proposal's been added to the two thousand twenty-two general election ballot. So all Pontiac residents will have the opportunity, um, to weigh in. As part of this, uh, millage proposal, it also not only would expand the number of routes through the smart, um, bus system with Pontiac being the hub for many of those new routes. It also restructures what had been an opt-out system, which has seen many municipalities throughout Oakland County opt out, say, we will not be part of this smart system, uh, which has led to a very hollowed out, um, overall map for service and, uh, the financial support. So Pontiac is not an opt-in committee, so, community, so we will not be as directly impacted by that aspect. Um, but I wanted to make sure that everyone in the community was aware that was a decision made by the Oakland County Commission in recent days. Um, and we'll, we'll work for opportunities for that information to get out and also share what the, the proposed map changes are as well. So folks can at least have the information available. Councilman Goodman, you have the floor.
So I know all of you know who are watching at home and who remain here in the chambers that transit is one of my top and key issues. Um, so I just wanna point out, since I know I can't say too many things regarding the millage, um, I, I, I do wanna point out that, um, the outcome of this millage does have a, a actual, uh, effect, especially when it comes to City of Pontiac. Because if this millage were to pass, obviously that, uh, expands transit in many different ways. There is a map of the proposed changes for that. Um, the counter to that, however, is that, um, given the explanation I've received multiple times in my understanding, uh, if the millage were to fail, uh, Oakland County loses SMART. Which means that we go from having a Swiss cheese system to not having a system at all. Um, so it just goes to show the importance of, uh, people voting in, in their best interests. Um, because again, th- this millage does, uh, a lot in one direction and a lot in another. And I, I want people to be very much aware that, uh, the declining of this millage would cause, uh, SMART, uh, in so many months to ha- essentially cease to, uh, operate in the county. So that will have a major, uh, effect on our public transit system either way.
Deputy Mayor Stevens?
Council President. Um, I want to reiterate what the councilman has said, um, in the sense to say that elections have consequences. And if you do not vote, you are allowing someone else to make the consequence and the decision for you. However it is that you want, you need to, um, actually get out and vote. The other thing that I want to do is to make sure that everyone, um, is voting on factual information and not hyped up information to get you into a place of fear, to get you to, to manipulate your vote. So the factual information that I want you to know, um, that the council has already said is that currently the City of Pontiac is an opt-in community. Which means that currently, the City of Pontiac, you as residents are already paying a tax to have a smart bus system. What is on the ballot now is for that to be county-wide. It is not a new tax on the City of Pontiac. It is an existing tax that is here and the vote is to say, instead of this being just the City of Pontiac, it would be all of Oakland County. The opposite is that none of Oakland County, including the City of Pontiac, would have this tax. Which means that none of Oakland County, including the City of Pontiac, will have smart busing systems. Please vote on the facts and not the hyped up, um, rhetoric. Thank you.
Councilman Goodman?
And I'll also go to say that that affects more than just the, uh, the fixed lines in the city. That includes all smart services. Uh, so the, uh, this not passing would lead to the, uh, fixed lines being cut as well as NOTA and WOTA, which is, uh, I, I know what for fact, WOTA is Waterford. I wanna say NOTA is like Northern Oakland County. Um, and both of those would cease to exist, uh, as well as the, uh, current flex system. Since those are all run by or, uh, in some way linked back to SMART. So again, just to point out there, anything transportation-wise that is a part of a transportation or smart millage would be affected by this vote.
Other discussion? I wanna share that the decision that the city council recently made about advancing a proposal to the voters about the operating millage restoration proposal, a question was, uh, invoked or, or statements were invoked this evening. Uh, the administration proposed that item and it will be the voters of Pontiac that decide that. So we will have one vote, just like everyone else. Um, but we, as the city council, opted to put that to the people rather than smother it in the crib here. And in large part, that is because the operations of the city are direct operations that benefit all of us. And the voters have already said what that operational mills will be. And it has been eroding, meaning less has been collected each year to the tune now of about two million dollars. So for multiple years, the will of the people has already been undermined because due to inflation and Headley rollbacks in the state constitution, it is cutting back and curtailing. So what the people have already previously approved is not being fully collected. So it's up to the people to say, no dice or okay. Uh, but that's the, that's the reality of the situation and we can provide more information about that. Uh, but it is the restoration of an operating millage for the general operations of the city that the people have already approved. And every year, it keeps getting less and less, um, number of mills being collected because of those rollbacks. It is in the state law that the people get to decide if that will be fully collected. If there will be essentially this rollback or override, um, situation. And that is being done in communities throughout Michigan, school districts throughout Michigan. And we, as the city council, would be very foolhardly to say that we don't wanna even give the residents of Pontiac the option to make that call. You've already decided what you wanted the operational funding to be and we're saying, hey, you still want that? Because for the last few years, we've been, we've been limited because of the state law. Do you wanna restore it? Yea or nay? And the chips fall where they may. If it's nay, then we'll have a few million less dollars that can go into roads, can go into essential city services, expanded, uh, impact into your neighborhood. Your call. Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, uh, moving on from the, um, millage proposals. We now are, uh, wanted to share, since we brought it up at a previous city council meeting, Oakland County Land Bank formally enacted. So the Oakland County Government has established the County Land Bank. Uh, in recent days, the county executive posted on social media him inking the pen. So there's a lot more details to come with that, but it'll have a lot of ramifications for the City of Pontiac. I saw in the Oakland Press today that Deputy Mayor Stevens, you've been enlisted by, um, Oakland County Government to help build that out or, or shape and influence that outcome. Wanna give you the floor if there's anything you wanna share on that?
Thank you, Council President. I will be brief. Um, as Council President said, Oakland County did just enact a land bank. And I am thankful and pleased to say that I have been selected as one of the inaugural, um, members of that land bank authority. So, you know, sometime in the very near future, we will be having our first meeting and really sitting down and talking about what the policies will be so that Oakland County can you basically, um, use land that others have abandoned in some way and use that to, um, forward the growth of the entirety of the county. And of course, um, it's not just the county as a whole, it is each individual community. And I am there representing Pontiac.
Any further discussion? Councilman Goodman, you have the floor.
I was gonna say that I, I think it's a, a good idea. I, I have personally looked at land banks as a very, uh, useful way of done right, uh, to, to benefit the people and the communities that they are in. Um, I would just say, I would love to see a, uh, a following presentation eventually from, uh, the county treasurer, whether it be from him himself or any of his representatives about this more for the community.
Agreed. Councilwoman James, you have the floor.
Yeah, I had the same thought. Uh, potentially, uh, land banks are great and they can do some wonderful work in a community. Uh, so I would very much like to know if we could hear more about it, the sooner the better. So I'm sure you'll let us know, but we welcome them to come in and, and, and once you guys set the guidelines and things, we welcome you to come in and let us know, you know, how it's gonna work. Okay.
Hearing no further discussion. The final discussion item is mainly informational, uh, but the Oakland County Government has put out a scam alert. Uh, there are mailings that have gone out to local homeowners in Oakland County, including Pontiac. And those mailings are claiming to be from the county deed records or for the home warranty division. So Oakland County Clerk and Register of Deeds Lisa Brown has put out communications and, and tried to get some news coverage so that residents, and of course, we're especially concerned about seniors, senior citizens, uh, that, uh, these mailings are not legitimate, they are not authorized, and they are not coming from any governmental unit that has the authority to request your information. So please don't be cornered into that. Um, the Oakland County Clerk has more information. You can, of course, if you need help connecting with them, contact City Hall, City Council, the mayor's office, uh, wherever you need to, if you can't directly reach the county clerk, if you'd like to verify, uh, the information that's coming. But it's something that has been hitting Oakland County mailboxes, including Pontiac. And we wanted to make certain that the word has gone out to be on heightened alert for that unfortunate, uh, attempt to, to corrupt and, and infringe in your, your personal information and your, your, the sanctity and, uh, ownership of your property. We do not want you to unintentionally undermine your property rights and your financial standing. Any further discussion? All right, with that, we are at communications. Pontiac Snapshot Resources to Help Launch and Grow Your Business is August twenty-fourth from five thirty to eight thirty PM, held at the Flagstar Strand Theater, twelve North Saginaw Street in Pontiac. Trinity Church Pontiac Fill a Bag, Feed a Family, every Thursday at four PM, including August twenty-fifth. At Trinity Missionary Baptist Church at one thirteen through one twenty-three Weston Street in Pontiac. Pontiac School District Carpool Cinema Movie Night, showing Space Jam Legacy, August twenty-fifth, starting at sunset. It's a free event held at Pontiac School District's Odell Nails Administration Building Parking Lot, four seven two zero zero Woodward Avenue in Pontiac. Oakland County Health Department's Extended Clinic Hours for Back-to-School Immunizations now through August twenty-sixth, with extended hours from four to six forty-five PM. Held at North Oakland Health Center in the County Complex, twelve hundred North Telegraph Road, Building thirty-four E in Pontiac. Walk-ins and appointments are available. Believers Community Outreach Center Youth Mentoring Program, featuring special guests, School Board President Gil Garrett on Ready for School, August twenty-seventh at eleven AM, held at Word Believing Christian Center Church, one fifty-six University Drive in Pontiac. Erebus Haunted Attraction is hiring for actors and makeup artists, um, with an open opportunity August twenty-seventh from one to four PM, held at Erebus Haunted Attraction, eighteen South Perry Street in Pontiac. Pontiac Praise Festival, August twenty-eighth from one to seven PM, held at Wisner Stadium's Grounds, four forty-one Caesar E. Chavez Avenue in Pontiac. For more information, call Christine Lynn at two four eight seven eight five eight five seven nine, including vendor opportunities. The Pontiac Block Party, presented by Oakland Forward, is on August twenty-eighth from one to three PM at Bodet Park on Orchard Lake Road in Pontiac. Canvas Pontiac, the art competition, uh, has its submission deadline on August thirty-first. Contact Main Street Pontiac or visit canvassponiac.org for more information. That's the art contest in downtown where the art pieces are blown up large on canvases in the downtown. Power Company Kids Club Fall Semester begins September tenth. Pontiac residents can text two four eight two five three fifteen twenty-two if you are interested. Congresswoman Brenda Lawrence has her coffee hour here at Pontiac City Hall, September tenth from twelve to one thirty PM. City Hall, right here in the council chambers, uh, four seven four five oh Woodward Avenue in Pontiac. The remainder of the events are later in September, uh, and beyond. Uh, so for time, they are in writing on the agendas if you need them. Uh, for the mayor's office, they highlight, and I don't wanna steal your thunder, you can take them or I can run through them. The Lawn Chair Concert Series is this Thursday, August twenty-fifth. Um, doors open at six PM, held at Murphy Park, four forty-one MLK Boulevard South in Pontiac, featuring Jill Marie Hamilton, Organic, and, um, uh, with William Cyprian as well. September is Senior Center Month with special events the entire month of September at Ruth Peterson Senior Center and Robert Bowen Senior Center. Lawn Chair Concert Series, September eighth at Charlie Harrison Park on University Drive, featuring Gwen Fox and others. Brunch and Community Conversations with Mayor Grimald, September tenth from eleven AM to one PM, held at Ruth Peterson Senior Center, Jocelyn Avenue in Pontiac. Lawn Chair Concert Series, September fifteenth, six PM, doors open, held at Rotary Park in Pontiac, featuring musician Melanie Rutherford, also known as the City Councilwoman, and her band Fat Greasy. Uh, the Mayor's State of the City Address is September twenty-ninth at the Crowfoot, one South Saginaw Street in Pontiac. And the, uh, final scheduled brunch and community conversations with the mayor is at the Bowen Senior Center, October eighth, eleven AM to one PM. With that, we are at closing comments. Deputy Mayor Stevens, on behalf of Mayor Grimald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. Um, just a couple of things that I, I do want to, um, highlight. Uh, and again, it's, it's all just to make sure that everyone is making information based on facts and not, um, hype. So millages. Um, as Council President explained, there is a state law called the Headley Amendment. The Headley Amendment forces communities to collect less, to, to levy less money in taxes whenever the property values increase by natural, um, causes. So if you have a house and that house is worth a hundred thousand dollars and next year that house is worth a hundred and ten thousand dollars, the Headley Amendment says that house increased in value naturally. So the amount of money that the city levies has to reduce so that the city does not collect more money next year than it did this year. Now, why is that important? That's important because costs go up. And the Headley Amendment does allow for some amount of inflation, but it does not allow for a perfect amount of inflation. And there is no true perfect, um, connection between what is called the inflation rate and the actual appreciation or depreciation of values in property. And so what do I mean by that? So the, the state sets what they call the inflation number. So let's say it's three percent. The state says, hey, this year, you can only in, in, collect three percent more than you collected last year. Well, the actual cost of gas may have gone up five percent. The actual cost of lumber may have gone up eight percent. The actual cost of, of electricians may have actually gone down fifteen percent. But when you average all of that out and you talk about all of the jobs and all of the functions that the city has to carry out, the overall cost of increased, um, services that the city has to provide oftentimes is higher than that actual inflation multiplier. So what has been placed on the ballot is for the citizens to decide. Do you want to have the Headley rollback numbers that we have? Or do you want to say, we as the citizens of Pontiac agreed that we want the city to levy this much percentage in taxes? That the, the information that is in front of you, that you will ultimately be voting on, would raise or, or roll the, roll up, roll back, whatever termination, whatever verb you wanna use. It would bring. to use, it would bring in approximately another $1.2 million for the city to provide services to residents. When you break it down and you look at the average value of a home and how much that means per homeowner, it's somewhere around $35 a year. But you spread that out across all the houses, you spread that out across all the commercial buildings, and commercial buildings obviously would not be paying $35. They would be paying more because their taxable value is higher. But you spread that all around everybody and that's about $1.2 million. So just want to make sure that you have the factual information on what is being put to the citizens. The council is not raising taxes. The mayor is not raising taxes. There is a ballot proposal for the citizens to decide, do you want to levy the full amount of taxes that you previously approved? Yes or no? I also want to talk about the, the gentleman who came from Pontiac Drywall Systems. So I did speak with one of those gentlemen yesterday, and I did inform them that it is my understanding that they are not the bidder that will be selected. However, no formal notifications have gone out yet. And whereas the bids were opened, and when the bids are opened, the, the bids are red. It's bidder X says Y, bidder Z says A. And you can see right when they're, when they're opened is, you know, Y larger than A. And from that, you may determine, oh, I'm the lowest bidder or this person is the lowest bidder. The fact of the matter is, you don't just look at that blind opening. You then go through and you look and you say, were there items that were included in the bid or excluded in the bid that would change the final number? All of those bids had two options in them. And so is the city taking option A or option B? And were you the highest bidder on option A? Or maybe you were the lowest bidder on option B? Or maybe it was reversed? So it is not as simple as saying, my number was the lowest number when it was opened. And so those final determinations will be sent out in writing, should be later this week. The last thing that I want to say, and I, and I really don't want to spend a lot of time on this, primarily because there is not enough time to spend on this because of how important it actually is. But we've, we've heard everything that has happened with the sheriff's office, with the residents, with policing. This is not a sheriff's office Pontiac issue. This is not a black and white issue. This is an American issue and an issue where all of us in America have to determine what our relationship is going to be with law enforcement. We have to determine as the voters, as the people who actually make the laws, what we want them to be. We have to set policies. Now, you as voters elect and appoint us to be your representatives. And you have to let us know what your, what your thought is, what your wills are, and how you want us to do that. But please understand that every law that exists can be changed, every policy that exists can be changed. So it's not an issue of just saying, well, that's the law, that's the policy. It's a matter of saying, what is the law and what is the policy that we want to govern ourselves by? Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk Doyle.
No comment.
Mr. President. Thank you, sir. I do want to acknowledge President Pro Tem Carrington. He was able to stay well past 9:00 PM, but today is his mother's birthday, her 76th birthday, and she, of course, lives up in Flint. So he is, is with her. And so he gives his, extends his regrets that he wasn't able to stay for the full duration and give his closing comments. We move now to Councilman Rutherford, District 1.
Good evening. Let me sit up the same way I did when I do everything else. He is without, he who is without sin, let him throw the first stone. I want to first apologize for disrespecting this body. I want to apologize for disrespecting the city of Pontiac and the president and the pro tem and the members. I want to especially apologize to my family because I allowed someone to take me out of character. And I apologize to the individual who I called out a name. It wasn't right for me to do so. I don't apologize because it's a political move. I apologize because it's the right thing to do. And even when people are uncomfortable, you have to admit when you were wrong. I don't share a lot about me personally, but I want to explain something to people so that they get a clue about why all of these things that have been happening in my district have bothered me tremendously. In 2013, I was diagnosed with PTSD. It is the reason why I walk out sometimes because when stuff is overwhelming, I have to walk out to soothe myself. That's why I go to cognitive therapy. Now, that's not an excuse for my behavior. I take ownership, but I would rather tell the truth before somebody tries to paint the narrative that she's out of control. All of these issues that have happened this week has triggered a lot of me because in the past, I've had, I haven't always had the greatest relationship with the police. I work on it daily. I do all of that because if I can't represent this city the right way, then I shouldn't represent it at all. But I represent this city in truth, even when I failed and even when I'm flawed. So I apologize for that, but I can't let my emotional outbursts deter me from what I think is right. I can't let my emotional outbursts deter me from messing up what happens in this body. And I'm being long-winded because I know how this, I just can look, and I wanted to apologize to you guys for real. I'll continue to work on my behavior. And nor am I using my PTSD to excuse it. I'm just telling you that it was so emotional in here today that I forgot where I was and I forgot who I was and who I am. And so again, I apologize. Lastly, I want to apologize to my daughter, Mariah, because I broke a promise. I'll work on it. To continue, on August 27th is the District 1 meeting. It's going to be at the Alley Cat from 11:00 to 1:00. Gil Garrett will be actually speaking there from a community liaison point. I hope that we use this moment tonight and the things that we talked about to motivate real change. Emotions run high when we're talking about subjects that make us uncomfortable and that we recognize that mental health is a real issue in this community. It's not to be laughed at, it's not to be slandered, it's to be uplifted and saying, just because you have mental health, it does not define you. And with that, I say goodnight.
Councilman Brett Nicholson, District 2.
Wanted to address something. Being called weak doesn't affect me because I know it's not true. I know the hard work that every person up here puts in. I see the emails that they go through, street combing, street by street, the thousands at this point of issues that each one of us individually has addressed. But another thing that is not weak about me is my hearing. And the ignorant comment that was made when our deputy finance director explained something to council and our president said, understood, and you said, I can't understand a word he says. That is ignorant, that is racist, and that has no place here. District 2 had a really awesome community meeting last night at Goldner Walsh. We thank you for all that came out. I know it is August and typically that meeting is underattended. So I'm glad that everyone that broke their summer fun and came and spent the evening with me and Coleman Yoakam. We got through a lot of different issues. We talked and gave an update about where the mayor's administration is on ARP funding. A lot of really great feedback and excitement over some of those opportunities that are ahead of us. We did go through a number of community concerns, all of which are being, are in the pipeline to be addressed. And I thought it was a really productive and, and great way to spend an evening and we'll do it again next month.
Councilman Mikhail Goodman, District 3.
I think it's extremely difficult, week, week after week, to hear the, the many different things that take place in this chamber between the many different issues. The first thing is, is the easiest and most lighthearted one. The way that you pay for things, especially when it comes to government, is through taxes. That is how roads get paved, it's how children get sent to school. It is how life goes on in a city and a society because we have all agreed to do our part to make sure that things are taken care of for people. Separate from that, I find it very difficult to sit back here as a, as a young black man and have to discuss and talk about what happened in the city of Pontiac. And that is because for, for a while, I think this may be a very strongly misguided mental situation I had going on that, you know, for all the failings that we have here in Oakland County, that what happened, not that it wouldn't happen here, but that it was a while away because it's not a, not a if, but a when. And unfortunately, we have witnessed what I thought would never happen in the city, to see someone, one of our residents, to be assaulted in one, one way or another form of the word. And I, I, it's great to see the community come together and to, to support and to fight for what many people believe is, is the right situation, right course of action. But I, I think we, as a community, as a society, as a government, have to begin to question a lot of things. I know Deputy Mayor alluded to us as a society having to discuss and come to terms with what laws and policies we want to have govern us. And this is but another example of the importance that that conversation must take place, that we must decide, you know, what it is that we want society to look like, what it is that we want policing to look like for black and brown and poor communities. Because we can no longer sit here and say, oh, it happened, we should, we should make some change about it and then allow it to pass. When we see issues like this, we speak of action, we pass resolutions, we go stand in protests, but there has to be action that follows up with that. Because if we don't, something else will happen. Something worse may happen. Or again, at the very least, the people will look at us and see that while they said all of that, but nothing has changed. So I, I think one of the more important things that we gather from this is not only the importance of looking and seeing and how we can improve and fight for the betterment of society, but also in making sure that in all that we do, we are fighting for every person, whether they be black and brown like many of us behind this council, be white, have mental illness or not. We, we, we should fight for a system that fights for everyone equitably and, and puts their, their needs as a human being first and foremost. So with that, oh, I do have one last thing. The District 3 Community Meeting will be happening September, I want to say, December, September 7th from 5:00 to 6:30. But with that, that is the end of my closing comment.
Councilwoman Kathleen James, District 4.
Good evening. District 4 is having our community council meeting on Wednesday, tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. It is a virtual meeting, and if you would like the link, the link is already online on my Facebook page, Kathleen James. It is also, I also can send it to you by email if you would send me your email at kjames@poniac.mi.us. I'll be happy to forward it to you. Again, our community council meeting is tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, and it is on Zoom. I've got a couple of other announcements that I've been asked to make. Beverly Thomas is a very astute lady in our community who does counseling, marriage counseling, and just promoting marriage, does a beautiful job. She's going to be doing a conflict resolution training for grandparents that are raising grandchildren in the city of Pontiac on Friday, September the 2nd, at the Ruth Peterson Center from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We've got a lot of grandparents in the city who are raising grandchildren, and this is going to be a really good class. She'll be working to teach a conflict resolution skills to those grandparents. So if you know someone who might be interested, please have them call the Ruth Peterson Center to find out the information, but it's Friday, September the 2nd. Also, the sheriff's department is having a Surviving Active, Surviving an Active Shooter Event Training this Tuesday, September 6th at 10:30 AM, again, at the Ruth Peterson Senior Center. And if you remember, Council President said that this month is the senior center month and they have a lot of activities that are going to be scheduled throughout the month. So there is going to be an active shooter training at the Ruth Peterson Center on Tuesday, September 6th at 10:30. And the last, oh, this is the same one, the grandparents, no, this is National Grandparents' Day is Monday, September the 12th, from 12:00 to 2:00 at the Ruth Peterson Center. Everyone is welcome. They're going to have lunch, storytelling, games, and songs, and they're asking you to RSVP by Friday, September the 2nd. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman William Parker Jr., District 5.
Thank you, Brother President, and good evening, Pontiac citizens. First, I want to thank all of our, those of the religious community who have come and given us our invocation. Specifically tonight, I want to thank Pastor Burgess of the Calvary Missionary Church for coming and doing our invocation this evening. I want to thank the council president and this great body for their proclamation recognizing my 11th church, my 11th pastoral anniversary at the New Spring for Missionary Baptist Church. Specifically, I want to thank council president, Brother, I forgot your name just that quick.
Charles.
Mike McGinnis for coming and sharing with us. I also want to thank Councilman Rutherford for coming and sharing with us that day. It was a good day held by all. I, I want to thank also this great body for the special meeting that we were involved in on Saturday. It was very useful and very informative, at least for me at the council. Some good information came out of it, and I will be sharing that with the district, with my CDC on our meeting on September 8th at 6:00 PM. You can find that on the city website. If you go to the, I think, the community tab, you'll be able to log on via Zoom, and all the information is there as to how to do that. If you have any questions as to how to do that, please give me a call at 248-758-3019, and I'll walk you through it. And lastly, I just want to say something. Once upon a time, once back a few years back, Will Smith said, police violence against people of color is not new, it's just being filmed. I think back to when it started with Rodney King, Tamar Rice, Sandra Bland, culminating with George Floyd, and the list goes on and on. Over 300 instances of police violence against people of color. And so we know that it's a, it's not only a Pontiac issue, as the deputy mayor said, it's a systemic nationwide ease, but I, nationwide issue. But I would even go so far as to say it's a universal issue. Having stayed in three countries, six states, seven cities, I can tell you it's a universal issue, and it's something that needs to be addressed. We need to make sure that each and every time it happens, we use it as a teachable moment and make sure that those who are involved are taught and trained on appropriate behavior that encompasses and includes the human aspect of what we are dealing with. Each person has a right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, at least in this land of the free and the home of the brave. And so we need to keep that in mind as we move forward and how we deal with the issue that we discussed this evening. We know each and every one of us, our hearts go out to the blatant instance of what appeared to be abuse. And I'm sure as this body moves forward and how we handle that, we will address that in the manner that is consistent with our, our respect, our integrity, and our honor for each and every person, each and every individual, each and every human that we represent. And so as we move forward, as Councilman Goodman said, as an often tell my church, ideas need legs. If they don't have legs, all you're doing is talking. And so I pray that our ideas, our thoughts, our communication, those things that we want to put in place have legs so that we actually move the city forward to resolve that issue, even as we try to prevent any other issues from happening in the future. And with that, I say goodnight.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. I'm Mike McGinnis, representing District 7, serving as council president. Sir, I guess council president, I want to reiterate, President Pro Tem Carrington, it's his mother's birthday this evening, well, all day. And so she, we wish her a happy 76th birthday. This is the first birthday she's had since her beloved husband has passed away earlier this year. Councilman Carrington lost his stepfather earlier this year, as you may recall. I just want to briefly give a shout out to Oakland Forward, who in recent days presented the Friends of Murphy Park with bouquets and other celebration with the end of their program. Very successful program this summer at Murphy Park, thanks to the really devoted work of the Friends of Murphy Park. And I just want to say thank you to Oakland Forward and President Emeritus Kermit Williams for celebrating their wonderful work. Heard a lot of positive feedback in the community about the summer youth recreation programs. Obviously, the numbers were solid, and anecdotally, I look forward to more assessment, more information as we move to the different seasons and expand and mature and further staff up our youth recreation options, opportunities for our residents. So I just wanted to acknowledge that in recent days, that has, the summer season has concluded, and we look forward to what the fall and future seasons have to offer so we can maximize the impact of the voter-approved youth recreation millage. Recently, the mural in downtown Pontiac of Elizabeth Dennis and Fourth was celebrated. I want to thank, there was a very strong turnout, five city council members were able to make it, but last week's resolution that was adopted, that was presented to the mural artist, Zach Curtis, led to a lot of positive news coverage and just a really positive celebration, not only of our community's history, but the arts and culture that make our community and our downtown a destination. Congratulations to Councilman Parker on your pastoral anniversary. It was an honor to be there with you this last weekend. I want to thank the administration and staff and contracted workers who cleaned up the intersection of Sanford and Auburn. You saw it last week that I shared that dumping that had happened there, kind of the piled up twigs and branches, and then some construction waste as well, and rightfully, the residents were frustrated with that, and we're grateful that that code has been enforced. Also, at Union and University, the residents in that vicinity are very grateful for the collaborative, comprehensive effort that resolved that overdue challenge with code violations. There are some lingering issues that we will address that has relocated to other parts of District 7, and we'll work through that, and we will be vigilant and proactive so that way all residents can have the municipal code upheld for their neighborhoods. Of course, you know, at that intersection, there was some demolition work that's been resolved. I mentioned Auburn and Sanford, they've already made more headway at that former nightclub that's being demolished. And we also have seen at North Jesse and Michigan, the former Liberty Apostolic Church that was abandoned, and in fact, shortly before demolition, had a fire. There was another concerning vacant property fire on North Jesse that we're looking to seek resolution on. But I am grateful for the administration and the contractors, who it is now a very well-tended, no longer obliterating intersection at Michigan and North Jesse in our district. Thank you to the DPW staff that changed out the park trashcans at Steed Park in our district. And then, so next up, we are very much looking for swift progress with the tree removal, specifically the stump grinding. We heard last week with the approval of the contractors, that now that we have that entity, they can catch up to all the trees that were removed to actually deal with the stumps. Now, I have a lot of District 7 residents that are very much waiting and eager for that progress, and also the clearing of the right of ways around Purdue School especially. So I'll continue to advocate and follow up on that. And then with that, for the sake of time, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
It has been moved by Councilman Goodman, seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford, that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Hearing no discussion.
One little thing. I would ask that whoever stole my chair would bring it back, because this is not my chair. It keeps going up and down, that's how I know.
All right. All right. Hearing no further discussion on adjournment, roll call, Clerk Doyle.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
I did not take the chair. Yes.
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
I stole it. Yes.
Goodman?
All these chairs are too tall for me to be behind this desk. Yes.
Six days.
That motion carries. We stand adjourned at 10:15 PM. Thank you all for your time.
Goodman, this chair won't go up, you can have it.
I stole your chair.
No, I'm not, no, you can talk to a counselor, you can talk to God, you can talk to yourself, I'm not talking to you.
I just did.
We're not the